Sorry to have to pass this, as we feel goal is trespassing against us. We decide the temptation, to wrest from evil, line with pardon, power and glory forever and ever.
This time I'd like to request the adoption of the minutes of the council meeting of June 11th, please. Moved by councillor Carrion, seconded by councillor Fisher. Are there any changes or deletions? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion's Kerry, thank you. This evening, members of council, our first deputation is from... Sir? I'm sure, yes. I'm going to ask for disclosures of a continuing interest from any members of council, any conflicts. Councillor Carrion?
Thank you, your worship. Item number L 2007-19, something to do with SciTech. I have a development on Stanley Avenue and SciTech has an objection to do it. So anything to do with SciTech, I'm going to have to declare conflict right now.
That's so noted, thank you. Okay, having seen none, we'll proceed with deputations. This evening, we have the pleasure of introducing Mr., or actually Sergeant Todd McKinnon from Niagara Regional Police and Linda Byer from the Niagara Regional Public Health, who will make the presentation to introduce the upcoming Regionwide Road Safety Campaign. Go ahead and come forward, please, welcome.
Good evening. Bring you greetings from the Regional Niagara Road Safety Committee. This is my colleague Linda Byer. I'm Todd McKinnon, I'm a sergeant with the Niagara Regional Police of almost 31 years now, and Linda's with Public Health. And we are part of the working committee of the Regional Niagara Road Safety Committee, which is comprised at the executive level by Chief Wendy Southall of the Niagara Regional Police, Bruno Iaff Brady, who was the vice-chair of CA Niagara, and Dr. Robin Williams, the medical officer of health for Niagara, and Mr. Joe Cousins, the Director of Transportation Services Division in the Public Works Department. There are a number of other members of the committee as well, Peter Bujic from Public Works, Vanessa DuPietre and Nicole Ruslin, both from Public Health. The problem that we are here to discuss this evening is a difficult problem in the sense that Niagara, if you look at and compare it to other regions, has one of the highest fatal rates per capita in Ontario. We are consistently in this area, in the Niagara region. You can see that in 2004, we had a rate of fatals and serious injuries that were .16 per capita, and in 2005, with our fatal per capita being .06. Now, .06 is higher than the other regions, but it's still an abstract number. But as a man that's had to deliver compassionate messages to unsuspecting loved ones, whose families have been killed in collisions, I can tell you that abstract number represents some very serious tragedies in the Niagara region. So that is part of the problem that we're here to discuss. And one of the major problems after we've analyzed much of the data in relation to our collisions, is that we've noticed that speed, driver error and impairment are the three main factors in collisions within Niagara. Now interestingly enough, 58 percent of these collisions occur on rural roads. Now certainly 58 percent of the community don't live in rural areas, they live in the urban areas of our community. However, because we have a number of urban areas with these sprawling rural areas in between, it seems that we're having a number of serious fatal collisions as well on the rural roads. Seventy-five percent of the collisions involve male drivers, with speed being a major problem in the under-50 age group, driver error in all of the age groups, with impairment being one of the major issues between the ages of 16 to 40-year age group. Our mission of the Regional Niagara Road Safety Committee, that was basically formed after a symposium in 2003, is to try and reduce fatal and serious injury motor vehicle collisions by 10 percent throughout our region. We have an injury prevention approach that involves enforcement, education, engineering and advocacy. Enforcement, in the enforcement area, we have recently formed the Niagara Regional Police Special Enforcement Unit. We run enhanced ride programs in an attempt to increase the perceived chance of apprehension, a possibility of apprehension by drinking drivers, and we run those during the holiday season, I know, and various other times. I know that Niagara Falls most recently has had a couple of rather large ride programs run in your area. In education, we have mature driving seminars. I know we have young officers, from the breath analysis technicians, that go out to the high schools and do hard-hitting presentations there. In the engineering area, we have operational safety reviews, traffic studies and capital improvements undertaken by the region and the various municipalities. Advocacy, media relations is important, and we'll be talking tonight about our new social marketing campaign, that the CAA Niagara and their Canadian Association of Chiefs of Police as well, take part in this advocacy. And in the areas, in this area, we're looking at our current project. The current project being a social marketing program called Think and Drive. The Think and Drive campaign started as a pilot program in the community of Niagara on the Lake. Niagara on the Lake does have fairly serious problem, a high incidence of fatal collisions in their area. So we started in Niagara on the Lake, just as a pilot program to see what impact we could have. The pilot program was a success in Niagara on the Lake, we had a number of respondents, we had an increased awareness of approximately 65 percent. People reported to us of an increased knowledge of the problem. Of course, knowledge is the very first thing we have to do, is educate people to how serious the problem is, and then of course, we want to increase people's intentions to improve their driving attitudes, hopefully changing their driver behavior at the end of it. And there are studies that say that social marketing combined with enforcement issues as well, in combination, are important in changing driver behaviors. So we had excellent response rates. So what's next, and I'll leave that to my colleague Linda.
So what's next? Just wanted to mention that the Think and Drive campaign is a social marketing campaign, and the reason that we started with that campaign is because statistics show that 85 percent of all collisions is are due to driver error. So we wanted to address driver error by changing attitudes, changing behaviors of drivers, and that's why we did the social marketing campaign. And as Todd mentioned, he talked about our successes in Niagara on the Lake. But what next is continuing ongoing enforcement, ed-earring, education and advocacy with the Regional Niagara Road Safety Committee. But also, we're at the point now where we want to expand the Think and Drive campaign across the Niagara region, in 2007 and 2008, with an expected launch in the fall of this year. Our Think and Drive goals are of course to decrease collisions that can result in fatal and serious injuries by increasing awareness about the Niagara collision problem, increasing related knowledge of skills, changing driver attitude so that drivers take personal responsibilities for road safety and changing driver behaviors. In Niagara Falls in particular, we know that there are specific issues to each municipality. In Niagara Falls, we know of course that it's a large tourist destination, I live here, so I know that that's the facts here. This campaign, I just wanted to point out, is not targeted towards our visitors to Niagara, it's not targeted towards tourists, it's actually targeted towards the people who live here. But certainly, we want people to know as they come into the community that the Niagara residents are interested and concerned about road safety, and so certainly, we want to let them know that we're doing whatever we can to reduce those collisions. In addition, Niagara has a lot of rural roads. We have a very large residential area and city area, but we also have a large number of rural roads, and we have a lot of concerned citizens with this issue. And on May 2nd, a Niagara Falls resident wrote into Niagara this week asking drivers to slow down in the name of safety, and you may have seen that article. So what worked well in Niagara on the Lake? What really was the, I think what really contributed most to the success of the pilot social marketing campaign was the community involvement, and that's exactly why Todd and I are here this evening. We had a number of marketing materials that we got out to Niagara on the Lake community to raise awareness, educate them about the problem, but what really helped was a number of people, including the police force, the local fire department, the local public works people, as well as the, excuse me, community policing groups, Public Health, Public Works and EMS, who all got together to try to address road safety in Niagara on the Lake. And also those groups helped to disseminate information and educate the whole Niagara on the Lake public about this being a community issue. So we had a lot of partnerships with the libraries, the Niagara on the Lake Hydro, a lot of local businesses and local employers who helped to get this information out. And all of these efforts really helped to raise the profile of road safety as an important local issue. So our next steps? What we've been doing is going to the different municipalities, and we've got presentations booked in all 12 municipalities. This is our fifth presentation to date, to get the word out and get advice actually from the local communities. So why we're here is to ask you, as the Niagara Falls Council, how you think we should proceed in Niagara Falls, and what really suits and fits your community? And so we're wanting to do that and ask your advice. We want to of course provide you with this background information, share our plans, create excitement and ask for community involvement. We've also met to date with public works officials, library CEOs, the regional fire chiefs, Brock University, and we have meetings scheduled with the Police Services Board, Emergency Medical Services and the NHS, among others, to ask for their participation. So really what we want to ask you is how we can work together. The members of the Regional Niagara Road Safety Committee know that like most Canadians and Ontarians, you're concerned about road safety in the areas of Niagara Falls and across the Niagara region. We're all parents, we're all neighbors, we're spouses and grandparents and daughters, sons, and so in the light of the collision statistics on Niagara roads, it's obvious that people are concerned with this, and we all want to protect our loved ones, and we all want to get home safely from this evening. Like most Canadians, road safety is high on our radar, we actually overestimate the degree of carnage on our roads when we do traffic studies, but the reality is, is that most of us also radar driving skills as very good to excellence. So we don't see ourselves as part of the problem. And so the Think and Drive campaign is about starting to change attitudes, change behavior so that we can each begin to take personal responsibility for safety on Niagara roads. So how can you help? On a personal level, we're just asking as a committee to please look long and hard at your own driving skills and your driving behaviors. We've done that ourselves because we see firsthand the evidence of what happens out there. We're asking to slow down, stay focused, eliminate distractions and drive straight and sober. Also, talk to your family, friends, colleagues and coworkers about the importance of doing the same. But as members of Niagara Falls Council, we'd like to work with you to roll out the campaign in a way that's most suitable and beneficial to Niagara Falls. And we ask for your help to let us know what road safety initiatives are already in place, because there might be groups that are very interested in doing this sort of thing or doing a lot already. How can we help to build on that? Who cares about road safety in your community and how can we partner with those people? And that's it for our presentation, we just welcome any questions and thank you.
Thank you very much Linda for your presentation, and Todd, I do have some questions for members of council, I'm going to call on councillor Wing.
Yes, you asked how you could help, and I know from my years on council that complaints about speeding, especially in residential neighborhoods, are endemic throughout the city. I could name streets in every part of town where I've had complaints about cars speeding, and it's very difficult to get anything done. It costs us a lot to do the EAs and introduce traffic calming. One thing I've noticed, I spent a lot of time in Niagara on the Lake, is the road, I believe it's road watch signs with a little i. Could you please explain what that program is? Is it related to this? Is it possible to introduce it into Niagara Falls?
Absolutely. Road watch actually came on the heels of the Think and Drive campaign. And what it is, is it's similar to a neighborhood watch, where it's very, the Niagara Regional Police are very involved at a local level. Residents are able to get a download of a form, but if you see someone that's driving erratically, or someone that you feel that their driving is inappropriate, their driving habits, you can actually fill out this form, you identify yourself and submit it to the NRP. When that person is identified and everything's checked out through the police, the first time, if there's a first incidence, the people will get a phone call to let them know, you know, we know that the owner of the vehicle gets it, we don't know necessarily if it's the driver, but there's someone that's been driving your vehicle in a manner that's not appropriate. The second time, there's a, you know, the first time there's a letter, excuse me, the second time a phone call, and the third time would be a natural visit. So it's proven, it's in 57, I believe, other municipalities or areas across Ontario, it's been proven to be very effective in those areas. It was started in Calladon, sort of on the heels of a very tragic death of about five teenagers a number of years ago, and it really reduced the fatalities in their area. And certainly, it would be available for any community who'd want to.
I think that's something we should look at, I think that would be more popular than the option we offer now of somebody getting one of those radar boards and, you know, because I know there's been times where I've encouraged residents who've complained to me about speeding in their neighborhoods, can you, you know, can you do this? And, well, no, I don't have time, and you know, it's just the coordination and that. But you know, this is something that's so much quicker and easier, they get the license plate number and call it in, and you know, I just see that as being a little more workable than what we've been proposing to date, so I'd really love to see this introduced here as well.
What really works well is the fact that oftentimes, drivers are the owners of the car. But it is interesting when mom and dad get the phone call, because they own the car.
Right, good point.
It can have a huge impact.
Yes. I have councillor Einoni next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as the Chair of Community Policing, who brought that road watch sign forward, I did think it worked. As a matter of fact, I, a former five-year Chair of Community Policing, has succeeded the mayor, who was I think there five years before myself. What are the Community Policing Committees doing in regards to promoting this and bringing the initiatives forward? I don't always think that that sign alone is going to work, and I agree with councillor Wing, often you'll have people complain, but they don't want to go to the time to put that road watch sign up and the speed board. That speed board sign is a huge eye-opener, because you never think you're going that fast. So what are our Community Policing Committees doing to encouraging the use of that sign? Because I've talked to our traffic department, and the calls aren't coming in for it, but the complaints are coming in. So how can we step that up?
Well, I think in the Community Policing Committees, what we'll be looking for is hopefully some volunteer involvement in dissemination of material, that will be huge. That's one of the things that I find that the committees would be very, very much important with. Now, we did disseminate materials in bills and things like that in Niagara on the Lake, including with Hydro Bill, all different kinds of ways of disseminating material, but volunteers that go out and speak to people in the community and put out posters and signs, that's a huge part of it, and it gives it that community support and flavor. I think that's what we're going to be looking for, that kind of support from the Community Policing.
And you know Sergeant McKinnon, I have to tell you, I concur with councillor Einoni, we had the use of the radar sign board, which I thought was very effective, and probably should be out in subdivisions more so, but we have often many complaints about, our residents complaining about high speeds through their neighborhoods, and throughout the entire city, not just in one area. So it's an area of concern that we have, and we share that with you. Unfortunately, we have a poor driving population in our area, and I notice on a regular basis, and I'm sure I'm just as guilty as the next person, so we're not casting stones here, but at the same time, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to listen to your message and to actually enact the message and carry it forward. So I appreciate the fact you've come and made a presentation tonight. I think we will have to certainly press upon and impress upon the Community Policing Committee to get the board out again in neighborhoods, and people I think are often surprised, I'm going that quick or that fast, and they don't realize their speed, so until they hit something or cause some damage. So councillor Einoni?
Thank you. The criteria for neighborhood watch is a certain percentage of the neighborhood has to sign up or the program doesn't kick off. That was a problem when we were in Community Policing, we couldn't get the buy-in by enough percentage. They wanted it, but they didn't want to do it. Is there a percentage for a road watch sign? Is there, does there have to be a buy-in of a certain amount of the community? Like, how do we make this work? I know people want problems solved, but they don't want to do it. So how do we, how do we encourage them to do it?
I'm going to let Linda answer that. She was more involved in the actual meetings where road watch was called than actually I was. She's a part of the Niagara Road Safety Committee.
In Niagara on the Lake, it is, it takes a large force of volunteers, and it also takes the participation of the police, because they have to handle all the forms that come through and be able to do a number of checks and that sort of thing. But it takes community involvement, it takes a certain amount of dollars to be able to purchase the signs, to be able to get the information out. It takes usually a group of people to get communications out and to be able to continually market that, that it's available in the community, because a sign is only as good as people know about it. So you really need a group to continually maintain that and promote it in the community.
Oh, it'd be interesting, the social marketing campaign had, we had a website, and I believe it was over 10 percent of the population in Niagara on the Lake actually went on to the website to take various, you know, they did, they could answer, they could answer surveys and skill testing questions and whatnot in regards to driving issues. So I think that that's another way that we can get the message out, by publishing the website somewhat that will be used.
Thank you. Councillor Fisher?
Thank you very much. I sit on Niagara Falls Community Police Service, and first of all, I'd like to go back and talk about Kathy Wilson, who was an educator at Westland, and she brought for years forward the red ribbon. And all the students at that school went out and distributed the red ribbons around Christmas time to make sure that they did not turn to the red. The Niagara Falls Community Policing Service is reviewing this and seeing how we can approach speeding. I really believe the young people are educators, not only of themselves, but they tell the parents and the grandparents what we're doing wrong, believe me, they tell us what we're doing wrong. I think we have a great opportunity in the schools to have these young people come together and start doing an educational program with them, and they're certainly pushing that for sure in my driving and my skiing and my turns and all the other things my granddaughter tells me that I do not do right. So I think here's an opportunity, but I was saying, the Niagara Falls Community Policing Service is certainly looking at an opportunity as far as how they're going to address it.
We have some very keen young people in our communities, but unfortunately, because they're in each area, whatever, young people are also involved in a high incidence of collisions. So we, one of the things that we have been doing, and it's in conjunction now with Public Health, is in Niagara Regional Police, I've mentioned it before, the breath analysis technicians go in with an extremely hard-hitting presentation, and not only do they address drinking and driving, they address speeding and aggressive driving and those issues with young people. Now certainly, they don't make it into every single school each season, but they're trying to fit their way in, and our community services section has essentially been scheduling them for the various areas, they've done mock practices and things of that nature at the high schools, which bring quite an impact on young people. So hopefully, all of those things along with this will help to change the behaviors.
Well, thank you very much again, and thank you very much Todd, we appreciate your presence here this evening, and we hope that the residents watching this this evening will pick up on the message you're trying to convey. We appreciate you taking time to be here with us to share that message. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Members of council, I'd like to ask two individuals to come forward with regards to the Millennium Scholarship Foundation, I'd like to call on Martha Zatkowski and Emily Gadula to come forward to the podium, please. You may recognize both Martha and Emily from their presentation at last council meeting, both of them have been very involved in Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, and we are very, of course, of course, are very thankful for their efforts there. But they are here tonight to be recognized as recipients of the prestigious Millennium Scholarship Foundation Entrance Award. They were selected from more than 9,500 applicants, a nationwide competition in fact. The award is presented on the basis of their outstanding achievements in leadership, innovation, academic performance and community service. I would like to welcome Martha and Emily back to council chambers, and I would like to acknowledge their family members who they brought with them this evening. Welcome to Martha's family, and also members Alicia and Richard Zatkowski, and to Emily's parents Sharon and Brian Gadula. I'd like to read a short paragraph prepared by the Millennium Scholarship Foundation describing the efforts of each of these young ladies, and the reason that they were each chosen as recipients of this award. Emily is an Ayn Meyer Secondary School student, energetic and dedicated. Emily is proud to represent her community of Niagara Falls as co-chair of the Niagara Falls Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. In this role, Emily has brought numerous benefits to the youth of her community. In an effort to increase student use of the transit system, Emily and the others, members of the Youth Transit Subcommittee, proposed that Niagara Transit hold 25 cent weeks during student breaks, and due to the more affordable cost of public transit, student use increased a whopping 500 percent during these periods. Driving force behind the May Act, of course, Emily has rallied her team to provide assistance with a number of charitable programs such as Out of the Cold, which provides the less fortunate with warm meals during the long Canadian winter, and has organized her school's annual Battle of the Bands and a student art show for several years. Emily will be certainly valued as a respected leader in her future career in international relations. Martha is a St. Paul High School student, voted as one of Ontario's top students by the US Magazine Next Step. Martha is definitely on her way to success, hoping to be a diplomat and immigration lawyer or United Nations translator. Martha has a passion for travel, different cultures and foreign languages. In addition to maintaining an average of 90 percent and over, Martha also finds time to volunteer for her school's newspaper and yearbook, to participate in the Model United Nations, the Math Club and the Pastoral Team, to name but a few of her many activities. She also contributes greatly to her community, volunteering as a high school leader for Sparks Canada, where she works with girls aged five to six. Martha plays with the girls, helps them with various activities, and acts as a positive role model, in the hopes that they will also grow up to be active and constructive volunteers. Martha is also responsible for putting together a team of students for the breast cancer Run for the Cause, and for involving her school in the nationwide event Lights Out Canada, which encourages schools to put out their lights on a specific day to help fight global warming. You can certainly see by the biographies of both of Martha and Emily, that they are very active in our community, and we are extremely proud of their efforts for the people and the youth of Niagara Falls. And I must certainly say that both of these young ladies are deserving recipients of the Canada Millennium Scholarships that they have received. And we look forward to hearing about their future success as they use their scholarships and venture into further studies at university. At this time, I'd like to ask Martha and Emily to come forward, and I'd like to have you join me in front of the podium, as I'd like to present to you with a certificate on behalf of the members of council to recognize this very prestigious award. So to Martha, on behalf of the members of city council, I want to extend our congratulations to you, the recipients of the Millennium Scholarship Foundation Entrance Award, congratulations and best wishes for continued success in all of your future endeavors. Congratulations.
I'm a first team scholarship, I've done a lot of hard work in this community, but I love to be in the midst of it, I love giving back to Niagara Falls, it's a wonderful community, and I hope that next year when I travel to England, that I'll also be able to devote my work to Niagara Falls to the community as well. Thank you.
And Emily, as well, on behalf of the members of city council, we want to extend our congratulations to you as a recipient again of the Millennium Scholarship Foundation Entrance Award, and we wish you, congratulate you for best wishes for continued success in all of your future endeavors as well. Congratulations.
Just being the, one of the co-chairs for Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, I was on my committee for three years, and it allowed me to indulge myself in our community, and I've really grown to love Niagara Falls, and I think I'll be very sad to leave it, but I've learned a whole lot, and as Martha said, it's really amazing to be able to give back to your community. And I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and the city for allowing me to be able to embrace myself in our community and enjoy what we're all about, so thank you.
Thank you. Very proud to have some very proud young ladies and great future candidates, thank you very much. Members of council, the next item on the agenda, the Ontario Heritage Trust Awards, and we have presentations to make this evening, and it's a privilege to welcome recipients of the Ontario Heritage Trust Awards to council chambers. Three awards will be presented this evening, and we are certainly proud and pleased to honor the local recipients of these prestigious awards. The Ontario Heritage Trust Awards are presented to individuals and small groups within cities throughout the province. The recipients are acknowledged for their, the exceptional contributions they have made to preserving heritage in their communities. On behalf of the members of council, I would like to congratulate tonight's honorees. Each of you have gone above and beyond for the city of Niagara Falls, and your role in the conservation of heritage in our community has been significant. It is a pleasure to be able to recognize your achievements this evening, and I am pleased to have with us Sharon Shearing, who will be able to join me to make these special presentations. Sharon is the Chair of the Local Municipal Heritage Committee. And before I ask Sharon to come forward to make the presentations, I've been asked to read a letter from the Honorable Lincoln M. Alexander, Chairman of the Ontario Heritage Trust, and his letter is as follows. Your worship, thank you for submitting the nominations under the Ontario Heritage Trust Heritage Community Recognition Program. Now in its 11th year, the program provides the opportunity to recognize individuals and small groups who have made significant contributions to heritage preservation. In 2006, communities across Ontario honored over 290 people through this program. And through participation in the Heritage Community Recognition Program, your county And through participation in the Heritage Community Recognition Program, your council has shown its appreciation of the volunteers who assume leadership roles in preserving your community's heritage. You share the honors being given this evening. You have recognized the importance of heritage and the leadership of these outstanding citizens. I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate the members of the Friends of Lundy's Lane Battlefield Board, 1999 to 2001, and Sherman Zavitz, for their outstanding contributions to the preservation of Ontario's built and cultural heritage. I would also like to congratulate Frances Corfield for receiving the Lieutenant Governor of Ontario's Heritage Award for Lifetime Achievement. And I'm sorry she wasn't able to attend the presentation event at Queen's Park on February 22nd, 2007. As we all know, heritage preservation must be embraced by the people it touches the most, people who join with their neighbors to protect buildings, natural heritage sites, and cultural artifacts, and to tell the stories, the local histories, that are the backbone of our understanding of who we are and where we came from. On behalf of the Ontario Heritage Trust, thank you for participating in this important volunteer recognition program. Yours sincerely, Lincoln Alexander, Chairman. And I'd like to ask, if I could, Sharon Shearing, one of our, again, of our local heritage committees, to join me in front of the podium to say a few words about tonight's award recipients.
Thank you. Actually, it's my honor to be here tonight, because I'm really pleased to be able to hear that these words, the hard-fighting people have worked so hard. First, I'd like to ask Frances Corfield to come in. Frances has been an active and enthusiastic volunteer in arts, culture, and heritage for 55 years. From the days of the war drive in the military to the present, Frances has given free only of her time, energy, and many talents. Frances was a charter member of the Niagara Falls Museum Society, and among other groups, a former member of the Black Act, now the Municipal Heritage Committee. In 1964, as president of the Lundy's Lane Historical Society, Frances organized the centennial celebration of the Battle of Lundy's Lane. The event was a great success with a platform of dignitaries from the U.S. and Canada. Frances worked as a director for the Friends of Lundy's Lane Battlefield. She has called the Friends an inspired group, the first group of people to fully recognize the great importance of German Hothop and do something about that. Frances and her husband Morris were among the largest donors to the Friends Canada Millennium Partnership Project. Frances and Morris have begun collecting and restoring antiques during the 1940s, who contributed a number of items from their personal collection to be used in the Battleground Hotel Museum. Frances served on the Battleground Hotel Museum Restoration Committee, and who better, as she and Morris had lived in the building for 72 years, before it was restored to the museum that we know today. Consultant John Jupian and heritage architect Peter Stokes regard her as an invaluable resource during the restoration. Frances Corfield has been a multi-talented and dedicated volunteer in our community's overall hack session. We're very fortunate that she's a member of our community and worthy of this recognition. Frances.
Presidentcy, the recipient of the Lieutenant Governor's Ontario Heritage Award for Lifetime Achievement, presented to Frances Mary Corfield in appreciation of her lifetime of volunteer work to identify, preserve, protect, and promote our province's rich heritage. Congratulations.
This is a double honor, really. Of course, the Lieutenant Governor's Award, which was a part of the honor, I'm just sorry I couldn't go for it. But there is another honor, and that's due to this council having nominated me, and I'm very grateful.
We have the College of Heritage Award for Historical Writing, Sherman Zavitz. Sherman Zavitz arrived in the Niagara area approximately four, six years ago as an elementary school teacher. He's had a lifelong interest in history and heritage. He's authored six books about local history and in around Niagara Falls, and we don't believe that he's finished yet. Mr. Zavitz was the chair of the Centennial Book Committee, who was responsible for the book Images of the Century: The City of Niagara Falls, 1904 to 2004. As I come writing, Mr. Zavitz has been the city's official historian since 1994, and also is the official historian for the Niagara Parks Commission. An active schedule of public speaking in and around Niagara region keeps Mr. Zavitz busy during his retirement years. Mr. Zavitz has been actively involved in following historical routes, the Ontario Historical Society, past president of the Lundy's Lane Historical Society, past chair of the Board of Museums, member of the executive of the Friends of War George, Parks Canada National Historic Site, and past six-year member of the Municipal Heritage Committee. The city of Niagara Falls is fortunate to have a member of its community who has a dedicated interest in recording the history of our area. Congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would say, Sherman, I've learned more from him about the history of our city than anyone else, and I most appreciate that he has a great depth of knowledge about the history of Niagara. And it's my pleasure to present the significant achievement to you in appreciation of volunteer work to identify, preserve, protect, and promote our province's rich heritage. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. To those who nominated me, I appreciate that very, very much. This is a wonderful award, and I want to always, this is a great city with a wonderfully long, fascinating history, and it's a tremendous treasure of mine, and I hope to continue with that for the next while. Thank you very much again.
And next, we have the Friends of Lundy's Lane Battlefield Board of Directors, not from April 1991 to 2001. Now, this consisted of 11 people, and unfortunately, this couple couldn't be here tonight. But those who are with us, would you please come down? Frances Corfield, Lenis Elliott, Les Elliott, Mel Brantley, John Hartman, Patrick McRoberts, and Jen Stein. Erin and Joan Martin are also members, and I know they've come here today. And we'd also like to remember Joan Beardmore and Jeanne Simon for now. In the spring of 1999, the Friends of Lundy's Lane Battlefield submitted a proposal to the Canada Millennium Partnership Program for the funds to restore the Battleground Hotel Museum, an 18-thirds property which played a key role in early tourism in the Lundy's Lane Battlefield. Over the next two years, the 11 people who comprised the Friends of Lundy's Lane Battlefield Board of Directors were extremely hard on raising the matching funds required under the Millennium Partnership Program. Money streams through raffles, garage sales, and historic house sooner, and then a field program reused to leverage additional funds. By the project's end, the award was recognized by the Millennium Partnership Program as having provided eligible contributions amounting to a quarter of a million dollars. The Friends project saw the Battleground Hotel Museum restored and furnished as a centerpiece of a newly emerging heritage tourism track. Restoration of this tavern was also a fulfillment of one of the dreams of Ruth Redmond, a local school teacher who had acquired several battlefield properties in order to protect them from the commercial development, and gifted these properties, which included the tavern, to the city of Niagara Falls in 1996. Ruth died in 1999, but the Friends were able to advise her before the passing that the project had been accepted by the Millennium Bureau, and the tavern would be restored as her wishes. The 11 people who served on the board from the spring of 1999 to 2001 were the body that ran the organization and planned its foundation. And I know I've got nothing to say, and the people have got together. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you very much, Sharon. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the internet payment of parking tickets, and we have Mr. Carl Drin to speak to us tonight about the new payment option for parking tickets. Mr. Drin?
Your worship, members of council, staff, and guests. Starting tomorrow, we'll be launching a brand-new customer service option. It will offer a new level of convenience for both locals and visitors worldwide. You ask, what is it? Well, this is the city's very first online payment option. Now you'll be able to pay your parking tickets in a safe, secure way using the PayPal network. And you'll be able to do this from the comfort of your home, hotel room, or anywhere else you have access to the internet. Here's how it works. You simply log on to the city's website at www.niagarafalls.ca. However, before we go there, I want to introduce you to a little guy here. This is the icon that you'll see on the, on the city's webpage, and he's what you'll use to access the website. As you can see, he's a little bit excited, and he wants to get moving on this. And here we go. City's main webpage. What you do is you click on the icon to start you. This will take you to the ticket search page. There, you enter the license plate number and the ticket number. And if you don't know where it is on the, on the ticket, you simply click the help screen, and it'll give you an example of the license plate and ticket number as to where it is. So what you do is you input that. You then search your ticket, make sure all the information that you see on the screen is the same that's on your ticket. We also identify that there's a $1.50 convenience fee. Once you're satisfied with that, you can move forward. If you're not, you can go back and start all over. So what you do now is you click at the bottom of the page, and it'll be the PayPal network, and that gets you into their network, and that's the secure feature of this online system. There, what you will do is you'll input all your information, your name, address, the type of payment you're using, whether it's Visa, MasterCard, as well as your email address, and that's very important. What you do next is you'll review your order and continue. So you have a look at it, and you say, okay, let's, let's look at this. What will come up next will be the payment confirmation. There, it'll tell you all about the payment details, tell you about the ticket. If there's things that you've entered that are incorrect, it gives you an opportunity to change them. Once you're satisfied with everything, you can hit Pay Now. And from there, you've basically successfully completed your payment. Then you can hit the Return to the City webpage button. There, there's a disclaimer that says the tickets will be verified by municipal staff, and they're not considered applied until that's done, which is really allowing us to do our checks and balances on it. And finally, you'll receive an email confirmation within a few minutes, saying that you've paid the ticket and all the details. And that's it. Plain and simple.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Mr. Drin by members of council? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the report to be received for council. Counselor Peter Angelo, and second by Counselor Diaddati. Any comments or questions to the motion? Having seen none, others in favor? The motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Drin. This time, I'm going to ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
We're now having a public meeting for the draft plan of subdivision to the Warren Woods subdivision. Purpose of this public meeting is to receive information and allow the public to comment on the proposed subdivision. Notification was given by First Class Mail on Friday, June 8th, 2007, and to all owners of land within 120 meters from which the application applies. Any person who are in service of the future meeting and/or the decision of council shall leave their name and address on the sign-in seats outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Diaddati. The applicant will provide this evening an overview of the draft plan of subdivision, and council will hear from any persons wishing to comment on that plan. There will, however, be no decision made at this meeting tonight. Council will consider all input and recommendation, and a recommendation report from staff at a future meeting. So at this time, members of council, I'm going to ask the applicant to come forward to provide an outline of the draft plan of subdivision, or his representative, if you would, please. Thank you. And for the benefit, and the benefit of the record, please give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is John Ruth, Centus Corporation, from Toronto, Ontario. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of councils. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to start our short presentation to you this evening by giving you some background on the members of the Warren Woods Development Team and the Warren Woods community. We're here tonight to talk about the revision to the first phase of the original 150-acre draft approval, which was approved in 1998. The revision is necessary because we have since acquired additional 150 acres, and hence a new plant and a new updated revision has become necessary. Warren Woods will be a unique and outstanding community, but it will also be an integral part of the existing Gartner community with linkages and complementing land uses. In the future, it'll become part of a larger and more comprehensive and diverse community. This will become clear to you when Dan Leening will come to the more interesting part of this presentation. But I'd like to speak to you briefly about the Warren Woods team that has been working together for several years to make the Warren Woods vision a reality. The team is a specialized mix of local and out-of-town personalities with extensive experience in community planning, residential and commercial development, residential and commercial construction and marketing, and the various principles of this team have been involved in planned communities across Canada and in the United States. This experience brings a unique element to the Warren Woods team. We have planned many unique and state-of-the-art projects, and some have been more successful than others. We know that, we know many residential community planning pitfalls, but more importantly, we recognize what the key ingredients of a successful community entail. And one example of this was the existence of a wrecking yard to the northeast entrance to our community. The site has been recently acquired. It will be cleaned up, and it will be an attractive entrance to our new community. A very important component of our team is the local content. Our team is made up of Niagara residents who know what the needs of the communities are and have provided input into this community plan. Now, this experience has led us to design a community that is diverse in housing tenure and built form. The Warren Woods community incorporates two key elements that are crucial to the Niagara Falls market. First is the lifestyle aspect. The plan offers homes that appeal to first-time homebuyers and retirement residences that include recreation and gathering places. The second is affordability. The plan incorporates a large variety of harming of housing forms and prices to accommodate a range of incomes. What we have accomplished to date, in our view, is substantial. All reports and studies to support the community and this proposed draft plan have been completed and submitted. We have worked very closely with city staff to review and indeed improve on the plan, and we look forward to continuing working with the city as the plan evolves over the next few weeks and months. I'll now turn over this presentation to Dan Leening, who is a partner of Planning Partnership, to review some of the community aspects of planning that we have integrated. to review some of the community aspects of planning that we have integrated into our vision. Dan?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll give you a quick overview of the community plan for the Warren Woods community. The community, as you can see, is, I'll just go here, is located in a location where it actually overlaps. This component of the draft plan is within the Garner Road secondary plan, and I'll come to that in just a moment with some more detail. The plan itself fits within a broader plan for conversion of a component, and I'm not sure if there's, there we go, for conversion. The Warren Woods property is along here, across, and up in here. The conversion, the lower portion here is currently as employment area. And the city has recently undertaken a study to determine how much employment is needed versus how much residential is needed, and that report has come back to you through staff in clarifying the ability for reasonable conversion, while still maintaining employment in the other areas. When, the overall site master plan, and as John had mentioned, we had prepared a overall site master plan for all of the lands so that there would be a complete plan that worked and was integrated. And I'll start to go through some of those sites, those features. The Badger Land is on the north of the property, Garner Road on one side, Brown Road along the bottom, you've got Montrose, and then, of course, Kalar defines the different edges of the plan. Part of the lands, as I had mentioned earlier, are already within the Garner Road secondary plan, and that specifically includes the draft plan that's before you this evening. But I just wanted to show you the comprehensive master plan so you have a better understanding. The, within the master plan itself, as part of the background data, we hosted a tour of new communities to look at what some of the newer ideas are that are being built in other locations. And this was done with your, members of your staff. And we had a look at a variety of different areas. There's been a number of different meetings with staff in the preparation of this plan. This was designed through a workshop that lasted two days, bringing in various specialists to make sure that we had all the data correct, and really run through a range of different ideas to really understand the market conditions in the city of Niagara Falls. The site area for the entire master plan is about 120 hectares or 300 acres. It's based upon many of the newer ideas of community design, which are now also contained in the province of Ontario's Places to Grow initiatives. We're looking at the opportunity for mix and diversity of unit types within here. As John had indicated, there will be a range of housing. And I'll come to some of the details in the draft plan itself. The ability of life-cycle housing, John had indicated, there is a portion of the community here which is geared to life-cycle, which is an opportunity for people who want to retire, who want to downsize, who want to stay within their community, but the ability to have a component that's integrated but is more similar in content and layout. The idea of life-cycle housing is that you can move into this community, you can start with a townhouse, you can move up to a small single, a larger one as a family grows, downsize to a townhouse and/or into the lifestyle component of the community, while you still maintain your doctors and your dentists, your friends, your church groups and different associations, instead of having to leave, which sadly happens to an awful lot of folks. The live-work proximity is that this, this community is, employment remains to the south of Brown, employment opportunities remain in here, and then, of course, the other nearby employment, again, trying to reduce the amount of car travel that is necessary in order to get through the week. It provides for a broader range of marketing appeal because of the different components in here for the city of Niagara Falls. In other words, it's not just another subdivision, it's not just another slice of land on the edge of the community done in a similar way. There's a very strong public realm, and by public realm, I'm referring to the elements of the natural features which will be preserved as prescribed, the opportunities for linkages, the watercourses, maintained stormwater ponds which will be naturalized, as well as the parquet features, which are the center of each one of these five-minute to two-minute neighborhoods or bounded. You can walk to the center of each one of these neighborhoods within a very short time to connect to the open space system. So it's very pedestrian supportive. In the draft plan itself, which is before you for the public meeting and ultimately review for approval, this is the first neighborhood. And this neighborhood, as I had indicated, you can walk from the edges, which are defined by natural features, the unopened hydro corridor, which will be used as a linkage system, again, natural features, and it's two to three minutes to walk into the center in here, which is, which is great for people who are dog walkers or proximity for the kids to use play facilities on a modest scale. It's looking at about 297 units between large single-family, which are around 50-foot range, 15 meters, medium-sized single-family at 40 footers to 12 meters, semi-detached, which are nine meters each or 18 meters per lot, and townhouses, which are six meters in width or 20, 20 feet wide. Again, as I say, it's a connected open space system. You can go from one neighborhood to the other neighborhood from the center, you can get onto the natural trail systems, or you can come to the more focal point in the middle of the community. Units front directly onto the park edge in here, and I'll show you some examples of projects that have been built along those lines in just a moment. This will also, with this intensification and development, will certainly start to help some of the efforts of the Niagara Square, which is adjacent to this property. As John had indicated, the AA automobile site, the wrecking yard, has been purchased by the Warren Woods Development Group and is now in, for a rezoning application and cleanup, but that's another application at another time. We were asked by staff to look at how do you, how can we connect the draft plan, which is right here, with the lands to the north within the Garner, Garner Road secondary plan, understanding that the Badger property is existing here and is continuing as an ongoing use. So what we looked at was an integrated road system that connects, open space system that links through here, natural features that provide edges and define neighborhood centers and opportunities for linkages and walkways. So that, that has been certainly undertaken, and these were submitted to your staff for review, both looking at open spaces as well as road connections. The actual open space linkages in the first phase, as I had indicated, they combine a combination of hard and soft surfaces that allow the ability to walk from the central parquet, which is two to three minutes within this neighborhood, along the road system with tree planting and sidewalks, through the open space feature into the natural system, which can take you to the other neighborhoods, or it can take you on a walk through the community and around here. Now, that can also be obviously combined with bike trails as well as walking opportunities. But we wanted to make sure that it's open, it's visible, and it's accessible. It's not parkland that's tucked in and behind some other backyards or along the edge of the community. The, this is an example of a number of communities that we've been working on recently, where in fact, these are smaller parquets at the center of the community that have units that front directly on. And a great deal of the idea here is you have increased use, which is always the best way for parks, you have safety, you have eyes on the park, and it really enhances a focal meeting point for neighbors. In a number of the communities we've worked on, this is where the community gets together for the flower show, they get together for the communal garage sale, they get together for the winter festival, and they've been very successful, and they've been extremely well-used. And as I say, I think the better parks are used, the better they serve the community. Stormwater ponds, well, this, this community has only a temporary stormwater pond until future phases are built. Our approach has always been to provide for stormwater as part of the open space system, as a part of a naturalized system. It's not surrounded by a chain-link fence, the slopes are very gradual, and it allows you to be able to integrate it with your walkways. This, this one that's being shown right here is one that we had designed in Wellington, just outside of Guelph, in a community where the residents' association takes a very active role in this area with the Bluebird boxes and some of the actual restoration of the landscape in here. This is another one that we had done in the Ajax community, just north of Lake Ontario, which is extremely well-used and is becoming highly naturalized as time goes by. So that's certainly part of our, our strategy. Other ideas about open space views is the opportunity that they are not cut off by lotting houses continuously in order to maximize yields backing on, on to woodlots or parks. Here, the idea is you should be able to see and access the linkages throughout the community, that it should be a cognitive experience, that a child could tell you where they are and where they're going. So just the view, corridor down the road to the open space, and this is in a community which we had designed in Markham, where in fact, there's a whole valley system in here. And we felt that enhances the quality and character of the community rather than shutting it off. And again, the value of being, as you walk out your house every morning, you see the great natural features, you don't see Fred's house at the end of the road. The ideas of enhancing the pedestrian realm can be done in a number of different ways and through different communities we've worked on. Through street design, make sure the streets are designed so they're calmed down, they're not speeding zones, but the parkland is well-used, it's accessible, it's visible, that there's good architecture, that through zoning, you can pull it up a bit closer to the road, get the garage set back further so it's not a wall of garages winding the street. This plan, in conclusion, has taken us two to three years, and we've been working very closely with staff over the last two years to prepare with multiple meetings as well as with public agencies. We think it reflects current market conditions in the city of Niagara Falls, and we know it also reflects a number of very progressive urban design ideas. It builds upon the previous draft plan, which was already approved, but enough time has gone by where it needed to be updated. And we would request council to consider this as part of a public meeting and bring it forward as, as soon as possible so that the first phase may move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilman. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leening. At this time, I'm going to ask the members of council if they have any questions of the developer. Members of council? Yes, Counselor Fisher?
Thank you. I have been part of project development for many years, part of sales and project manager, my title was. So I've been involved in a lot of projects, and I really like this proposal. I really do. This meets the preventive guidelines, it's a place to grow. And I'd like to know maybe from Mr. Darverson, how soon can we bring this proposal forward with approvals? We see this in the very, very near future, because I think this is a great opportunity.
Mr. Darverson?
Mr. Mayor, yes, this is a resubmission of a very good draft plan. That will take very limited time. We have an additional plan subdivision, so the two are going to be signed together.
I would think by the fall, we would see a public meeting being held to consider the subdivision plans and rezoning applications for both of these properties.
Thank you very much, and I hope you're as pleased with this as I am. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask anyone wishing to comment on the plan to please come forward. Those speaking are asked to give their name and address before offering comments, and as required by the Planning Act, please be advised that failure to make an oral written submission at the public meeting or a written submission prior to council approving or refusing the plan may result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any appeal that you may file against the decision of council. So if there's anyone who'd like to come forward to speak to this matter, please come forward and identify yourself. Evening, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Barker, I live at 134 Church Street, St. Catherine's. I'd like to say at the outset that I'm very impressed by the overall approach taken in this development, especially seeing what appeared to be the concern of protecting the existing remnant forests on the property and to also link them with corridors, which is the key, I think, concern in developments such as this. I do hope that what we saw on the screen and the background reports are mailed to the people that signed the notice for the public meeting, because this is a very complex matter that requires a lot of attention. I'd like to say at the outset that this is an area where a lot of care and sensitivity is required. It's not a normal type of development. In order to have councils understand this well, I would suggest you read the Warren Creek watershed study that was done for this area. And it points out that of all the areas currently within the urban boundaries of the city of Niagara Falls, this area is probably the most ecologically sensitive. And this is for a number of reasons. One is the significance of the wetland forests in the area, which it's very careful that they be protected to include the drip line buffer. And also, there's another aspect to this area which is quite complicated, it's detailed in that report, and that said even what appear to be inconsequential drainage ditches in this area are significant fish habitat. They wouldn't necessarily look so right now, but in, in parts of the year, such as the spring, when these areas are full of water, they are important for breeding for both northern pickerel and pike. So it's important that this area be looked very carefully to see if these functions are not impaired. The other matter that is dealt with in the report, which I think refers to general development throughout the area, it points out that development under industrial zoning, such as most of this area currently is, it's going through a transition, is generally at lighter density than residential development. And it points out that's why you need to really exercise a lot of care to make sure that the corridors are not, you know, disrupted, that the woodlands are protected, and that the drainage features survive and continue to function as, as fish habitat. It points out this is one of the most significant areas for wildlife within the urban boundaries and the currently deer go between the existing forests. So I just want, make this as a precautionary note, not speaking against the development concept, but I certainly want council and planning staff to take enormous care and study towards this development, which is probably one of the most ecologically significant areas of developing land within the urban boundaries.
Any further? Thank you very much for your submission.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address this matter?
Mr. Chairman, members of council?
Just for the record, please, we-
Yes, Jean Grandoni, rural Route Number One, Garner Road, Niagara Falls.
Thank you.
My concerns are very similar. There's been a watershed plan done, and it would be reasonable with, seeing that- There's been a watershed plan done, and it would be reasonable with, seeing this been done, public money has been spent, that it be carefully followed. And it seems that the developers are on the right track, but I do have some questions with regard to the details of it. And could I ask a couple of questions to Mr. Darvison?
You could place them, yes, please, place them forward, please.
Does this go on the other side of Garner Road as well? Side as well?
Mr. Darvison, would you be aware of that?
The action is a small piece within the broader secondary plan area that's not owned by this particular firm, but I think Mr. Leving described the boundaries of the actual development. So the, this secondary plan concept shows a larger area, but it's shown for demonstration purposes to show how the subdivision fits into the larger area. So there will be other developers in this area that will be associated with this planning.
And so he does not own that forest that I believe is in the Badger property?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, is he protecting everything that's in the watershed plan? Does it need to be protected?
Yes, just a bit of background there, the city in doing this Garner Road secondary plan also did a watershed plan for this area. And that watershed plan identified areas of forest and wetland areas, and these areas are actually PSWs, provincial significant areas, and therefore they must follow the provincial government rules in protecting these lands. Therefore, you see how the subdivision is integrated around those green spaces. So under the Planning Act and under the provincial guidelines, those areas will be protected.
Is there any water course realignment?
Yes, there's a, the watershed, watershed plan talked about the possibility of aligning, realigning water courses. And the central spike with respect to this whole area is a water course that we started to develop with the original subdividers, North and Mapal Road. That water course would continue, small realignment, and then continue on. And that was contemplated in the watershed plan as well.
But in that stage one that he's proposing right now, are those water courses being realigned? Right in Taylor Road there, like in stage one? Is he realigning it, or is he following the natural?
Mr. Darvison?
I'm going to refer to the details of that. The staff haven't really studied this proposed concept. This is a public hearing, you've gathered information, but Mr. Leving can answer your question a little more detail than I could this evening.
Perhaps, Ms. Grandoni, can give us the questions you do have, and we'll ask one of the representatives to come forward.
On one point, there's some activity, site alteration going on near Garner Road to the, I think it's to the west of this stage one, and I'm just wondering what's going on there. It's getting awful close to the forest, it makes me nervous, because I would like to see proper buffering as well. And I think that's all, and I would like to notify-
Thank you. We'll ask, we'll ask your questions of the developer. Mr. Leving or another representative, if you can come forward to address that, please. Okay, thank you. Once again, for the record, please.
My name is John Culp, I'm also with Centex Developments.
Thank you.
Both, both members of the public with concerns are quite right. They are very sensitive environmental areas, and we've had environmental consultants identify those, and that was the beginning of our two-day session. The first thing that went on the plan was the environmental areas and the need to preserve those. So they are being preserved in their entirety. The water courses, even in the first phase, are both being realigned. The city is actually undertaking an EA process right now. It's gone through one public meeting, and there's another public meeting coming up on July the 12th. And the, and the water courses within the first phase of the draft plan are both subject to that EA process.
Good, thank you very much.
Still a question, someone else can answer that question better than I can.
Okay.
Is it on our property? About 200 feet away?
It's about 200 feet away still from the environmental area, and we'll pay particular attention to make sure that it doesn't encroach on that.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to make comment to, please, on this matter? Please come forward. No one else? At this time, then, the public meeting for the draft plan of subdivision is concluded. I'd like to ask council to have a motion to refer the comments received at the public meeting to staff for consideration in the review of the draft plan of subdivision, moved by councillor Einony, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any discussion?
With your worship, I noticed that SciTech has made an objection to this project as well.
Okay, so noted, thank you very much. So the exception. Any comments further? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion is carried, thank you very much. Thank you again. Under the miscellaneous planning matters this evening, we have a request to extend the historic Drummingville Community Improvement Project area boundary to 5982 Culp Street. Before you, I have, I guess I can have our director of planning address this matter, Mr. Darvison? We have a report before us.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. We tried to explain in our report how the boundaries were established. They are to encourage through incentives economic recovery of predominantly commercial areas. Although bent breakfast facilities would be covered under the Development Charges Program, really it's beyond the area that we considered to be a declining area. Housing in this area is quite good. We made those definitions of boundaries on a very thorough basis. We don't really think it's applicable. If we do decide to extend the boundary, we'd have to do through the full notification procedures and so forth. It's our recommendation not to support the amendment. It may lead to further requests in the future. It's the same process that will be followed in defining this particular commercial area for improvement, the downtown area and so forth. There are certain areas that are clearly in economic decline, and certain areas that are beyond those boundaries that are self-sustaining. So that is our recommendation this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darvison. And do you have any questions or a planner at all with respect to this matter? Having seen none, we do have the recommendation moved by councillor Kerrio, seconded by councillor Thompson. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion is carried, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the application for revitalization program for Mr. Jody Burdette from Niagara Tinting. And we have a recommendation that council approve the application for revitalization grant, and also that the mayor clerk be authorized to execute the grant agreement. Councillor Einony, moved, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any discussion? Having seen none? All those in, sorry, any discussion? No? Okay, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? The motion is carried, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is request for removal of park lot control in the plan of subdivision on Silver Star Court and Upper Canada Drive in Garner Village. Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Fisher. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion is carried, thank you very much. Next on the agenda refers to our arena matters. We have an update on the four pad arena complex project. We also have a presentation on the matter from our director of Parks and Recreation, Ms. Denise Morrissey.
Thank you, through your worship and to members of council. The report before you is a fairly comprehensive summary of where we've been working towards since you approved on May 7th to move towards a four pad. In your package is with a full color handle, but I'm first just going to do some brief mention of some of the highlights of the report. It truly has been a collaborative effort of many of our arena user groups and our community partners in reaching the design in drafts as before you. Fundamentally, we have been working towards addressing the needs of all our community user groups since the approval within the space that the budget would accommodate approximately 197,000 square feet. Through these meetings, with most recent meetings being in June, what we've been able to do is incorporate many of the key service functions that our community groups would like to see. We've also been able to include every user group, our main partners, in the facility by calling our new four pad, now the home of these community organizations, on the second floor. Later in the presentation, I'm going to walk you through some of the main features of the design to this date. What I'd also like to point out, though, is that through the user groups and through the Recreation Committee and through our fundraising team, that many of the inclusions that you're seeing in the facility wouldn't have been possible without their true commitment to compromise, balance, and serving communities first. As you will see in this plan, we have both the junior Bs and the junior Cs in our main 2,000-seat arena, calling that pad home, with both their administrative offices in there as well. Before council, we have one thing we'd like to ask you in terms of the recommendations as well, is that in addition to approving the representatives of all of the user groups that have put their names forward and continue to work with us, we would like to have a member of council serve with us over the next year to two years in terms of moving forward on this exciting community partnership and program. The report also highlights for you the key milestones that we need to achieve in going forward to the open in September 2009. It would be an understatement to say that our project is under some intense timelines, and our project schedule and our construction timelines are those that we would characterize as aggressive at this point. So with that said, what I'd like to do is give you a brief overview by walking you through the design to date. And what's before you is the first floor of the arena. With 196,000 square feet, a large arena, we've been able to find to, or retool some of the placements and some of the major aspects of what we see as the heart of the community facility. So coming in the front door, which would be to your upper, the upper tier of the, of the presentational draft, and Thurlstone Road will be at the top, would be the main entrance. At this end here. So you'd come in at the main entrance here, which is fully sliding doors, and I guess I'll use the comparative of McBain. I guess critical to working towards this design, and I'm going to note its reference, is our consultative and key interaction with our disability committee, making sure that not only are their needs met, but it has been one of the critical components of the design. And we met recently with them last week, and I'd like to, I guess Dean could reiterate, very, I guess, excited about the level of design features that have been truly significant in reaching the needs of those members of our community. So when you come in the door, the first thing you're going to see on your left would be our reception, our administrative areas greeting you to get you in. Adjacent and across the hall is what we're calling the memorial community room. That name is, again, tentative, but we felt that that's critical to encapsulating and celebrating Memorial Arena. This is much larger than the original elements, it's 4,000 square feet. We've made it dual-purpose, with the meeting room on each side divided by the center. What is one of the most exciting features, well, staff, we think so, is that this right here is an element, I guess, equivalent to a garage door, which will slide up for our user groups, shaking, sorry. The training capacities in here will be fundamental, because you can move beyond the rink into the room and use this for all elements of it. We see this as a key public skating feature, too, for the community with the accommodating, if you've been to Ridley, there's a component where you can put a band on the weekends. We see this facility not only serving for ice, but truly being the focus of recreational activities, focusing on active families, participation, and then thereby looking at the obesity rates. When you come in, new feature in this design, again, going to four, is a pro shop. Our user groups have stressed the need that they need access to those kind of services, and through the expression of interest, we hope to find very high-quality service providers. All of the washrooms are fully handicapped, accessible, you see a series of washrooms right here. We have made provisions on one unit and many of the areas to make sure that they're supportive of those persons that are on the motorized scooters. Adjacent to that will be the concession area here, the conveners' room, which looks out into all the glass. These are our oversized change rooms, the entrance to the number one pad. This is our refrigeration area, might not be that exciting to not everybody, but our operational staff in terms of complication, this was obviously critical to the entire, it is about ice, so we feel that that's one of the most important things from our side on the functionality. Taking you back into the first floor, we have the junior Cs, and we have the junior, sorry, the junior Bs are here and the junior Cs. The new feature that we've been able to accommodate in this large is a 1,000-square-foot dry training room, Stanford skating club, the Bs and the Cs, groups that have to train more meticulously appreciate this room, there's a first aid room that's shared. Moving you to, this is a meeting room as well, so we have ample community space for all of the members of the public, as well as nonprofits that may need to use this facility. Moving you to the second floor, and again, moving that up, what we have is the elevator taking you up, again, to the second floor, which now has all of our user groups in this area except the Bs and the Cs. So they'll be sharing a meeting room, it won't be exclusive, but this is a fundamental partnership achievement, we think, where the collaborative efforts and working together will strengthen this becoming the major home of every organization in our community. What is also new is the dedicated area available now for what we're calling a food and beverage licensed quasi-restaurant area overlooking number one pad, unobstructed view. This area also, too, is all see-through, so the heightened level of appearance, this will be not your standard arena, it's going to be very aesthetically attractive, a lot of natural light. The bowl, and again, it's 2,000, and I think councillor Mays had asked for clarification in the May meeting, it's approximately 300 singles standing around this area. I guess if we were shorter, we could get somebody behind you, but that's basically our capacities. It's unobstructed, you can walk around it, we're not encouraging running, but for walking that will be possible. Going back to the consultation with the Disability Committee and our architects, BVA, is a firm that is truly committed to this kind of concepting, is in each of these little areas, you see these intakes, those are not just random gapping. What we've done is made a thorough commitment, and you may have the experience in some facilities where if you are in a wheelchair, you have certain challenges that you are designated to certain areas, and you really don't have a lot of choice. In our facility, you will have choice. You will be able to stand or have a wheelchair in some of these areas. So if I'm with somebody like my grandfather who's in a wheelchair, I'll be able to share the experience of a hockey game or an event with him, and I'll have choice in doing so. We'll also be having another food and beverage service up here for the person or the family that doesn't wish to sit down. They will simply get their amenities here, go back, and there's a public seating area here as well. Each of the community pads has 250 bench seats, so our collective capacity in this facility is what we think is fairly responsive at 3,000 collectively. And I will point out that I know that there was comments that we were potentially, with only 2,000 seats, some events might be impacted. However, in a normal bowl, it would go all the way around. So if we had a concert, we would be setting up here, for example, and you still wouldn't have these seats. So in terms of floor, if we put 500 or 600 on the floor, if we ever did dry use, and 2,000, you're still getting a capacity with a 2,600 seating if we ever went that way. If you have any questions with respect to the design, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Again, we do have some questions of Ms. Morrissey, councillor Fisher.
Thank you, it's a beautiful design. But I sit on the Sports Wall of Fame, and I see you are going to be meeting with the Sports Wall of Fame and the Arts and Culture. And as you know, the Sports Wall of Fame have run out of wall space, and since we're going to be moving, where do you anticipate that we will be able to put our Sports Wall of Fame?
Okay, I guess councillor Fisher, I refer you back to the first floor. And one of the concept plans that we're looking at currently, and we need to just sort of refine the presentation to the Sport Wall of Fame Committee, is having the conveners' room, which is approximately 2,000 square feet, be dedicated to a component of the Wall of Fame. There's going to need to be a balancing, obviously, in this new arena on how much wall space, but we're quite confident we could probably carry about 15 to 20 years in that space. And then look at a kiosk for live, incorporate the type of Wall of Faming that the library has under Mr. Longo in terms of that. But before we come back to the Wall of Fame, we certainly want to package this well, we want to explore all the opportunities to ensure that that component of our history is well-presented and celebrated in this facility.
Of your taste, because when we get the community centered, there were no walls available, so you will be able to repair some area.
Yes, we're committed to dedicating a certain area of the facility specifically to celebrate the Wall of Fame. It's just right now trying to balance the number of years with how many years can be present at any one time in the area.
Thank you very much, you're welcome.
Any other questions of Ms. Morrissey? Okay, members of council, we have two requests, then. The first one is to the recommendation that the four pad arena complex project be received as a report. I'll take that motion, moved by councillor DeDatti, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any questions to that? Councillor Thompson?
Yes, I would move that councillor Kerrio be the nominee-
Okay, well, let's just take one at first, if we can, please, and we'll do that first if we may. So the first part of the motion, I'll call that vote, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Councillor Thompson?
Could have been done in one motion, but I'll make the second motion.
And the person is?
Councillor Kerrio.
And is seconded to that? Councillor Kerrio, do you consent to that?
Someone else, someone else wants to do it.
Anyone else who wishes to handle it?
Is the meeting during the day?
Ms. Morrissey?
They somewhat vary, the majority of them are at night.
Is there anyone else who'd like to volunteer? Councillor Einony? Okay, is that satisfactory? Is there a seconded to that? Okay, councillor DeDatti, sorry, all right. Okay, we'll call the vote, then, let councillor Einony be appointed to represent the council on that committee. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you very much. Councillor Einony?
To that point, Ms.
To that point, Ms. Mayor, if I can't make it, I will be calling another member of council to attend that night, because I think it'll be important to always have a member of council at that, so just as long as everybody's amenable to that.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the execution of an agreement with SciTech Canada Incorporated, known as SciTech, and Falls Community Development, Inc., known as FCDI. We have a presentation to receive. We have representatives from both SciTech and our consultant as well, Mr. Schramm. So Todd Davidson is also here representing our interest in this matter. And we do have a request to speak by Mr. Gillespie, who's representing United Here, and so you have that in your package. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Beeman, do you have any comments to make first?
No.
Okay. Then, Mr. Schramm? Okay, yes, I'll call Mr. Gillespie then at this point. Mr. Gillespie, please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. Again, for the record, I'm Eric Gillespie from the law firm Cunningham and Gillespie LLP in Toronto. I appear today on behalf of our client, United Here, Canada. The members of council are just being distributed with some information. The fact of the matter is, we had a completely different presentation to give the council back on April the 11th. However, events, I think it's fair to say, have overtaken this matter, and as a result, we're going to be doing the low-tech version tonight of materials that I think a number of people have been working hard to prepare. In council's package, you will find information about the agreement that you're being asked to approve this evening. The central issue from a legal point of view appears to be the fact that the city of Niagara Falls is being asked to take this site, quote unquote, "as is" and provide a full release to SciTech for these lands. In the materials that have just been handed out, you should have an excerpt from the actual contractual agreement. And as is clear from the highlighted boxes, you can see that the donor shall have no liability or obligation to the city, the donor being SciTech, with respect to value, state, condition, environmental or otherwise. And as in addition, the city is being asked to provide a release. The city fully releases the SciTech parties, said release to become automatically effective at the closing without the necessity of any further documentation from any and all liabilities arising from or in any way related to the arena lands. And in my submission to this council, that's very clear and unequivocal language that in effect, the city of Niagara Falls and its taxpayers are taking over the ultimate responsibility for this site. I think it's also very important to highlight one other thing, and this is also in your council package, that the onus of being satisfied with the preferred site, once you agree to the agreement you're being asked to approve tonight, switches and now rests with the city. In other words, the city becomes responsible for the environmental due diligence and satisfying itself. The SciTech group is not holding out any warranties, representations, or otherwise in relation to this site. With that being said, I'll turn to the second, and I think for practical purposes, much more significant aspect of what we're here to present to council tonight. The Ontario government does brownfield redevelopment basically as a full-time business, and as a result, there are constantly new developments occurring. On March the 28th of this year, just days before the April 11th meeting here, the Ontario government released an entirely new set of standards. These are the proposed new standards, proposed to replace the 1997 standards that were applied to the SciTech development. That particular proposal has created a great deal of concern and consternation within the practicing environmental bar. I sit as a member of the executive of the Ontario Bar Association Environmental Law Section, and there are a number of certified specialists certified by the Law Society of Upper Canada. There is great debate occurring right now within the legal profession, those of us that work in this area primarily, about the fact that the MOE has brought out sweeping new standards that effectively replace most, if not virtually all, of the existing standards. What does that mean here? What we've done is, you'll find in your package pages and pages and pages of detailed scientific review that has been conducted. I will not attempt in the few minutes that we have this evening to go through all of that, but we've simply prepared a summary chart, the one that's up on the screen, that all councillors should have as well just handed out now. As you can see, if we look at this chart, there are a number of chemicals identified, arsenic, lead, selenium, thallium, and so on. Arsenic of those chemicals was the only one that was originally identified as triggering the need for risk assessment under the 1997 standards. So you can see at the SciTech site, 52.8 parts per million of arsenic was found at one or more locations on the site. And ultimately, that meant they had to risk assess arsenic. They only risk assessed three substances, arsenic, thorium, and benzoyl pyrene, as a result of the fact that under the 1997 documents, there was no need to go into anything further. You can see in relation to arsenic, the proposed new standard, 2007, a decade later, is 18 parts per million. So clearly arsenic would still be caught, and in fact, you've gone from a 6% exceedance to 193% exceedance. But far more significantly, I think, for this council, under the new proposed guidelines that are out there, lead, there is known to be 339 parts per million of lead at this site. The old guideline, 1,000, the new, 140 parts per million. Lead has not been assessed by anyone at this site because they didn't have to, but under the proposed guideline, it will be something that if that number sticks, is clearly going to trigger the need for a risk assessment. What's the likelihood of that lead number sticking? All I can advise this council is the Canadian Council of Ministers of the Environment, which generally takes the lead in standard setting across the nation, have accepted the 140 parts per million guideline for some time. So it's fairly probable that Ontario is not going to contravene when they're a member of that council. What you're left with then is instead of assessing three chemicals of concern, under the new proposed guidelines, you will be left with nine additional chemicals of concern, the ones that fall below arsenic on that list, none of which have been risk assessed. What does that mean in practical terms? It means that this council is being asked to move forward to take on full environmental liability and responsibility for a site and the cost of doing all that assessment right at a time where it is now known to this council that the standards are about to change and change very significantly. The fact is, these are only proposed standards, but I'm going to suggest to this council that that still raises very clear issues. The most obvious being, as a public entity with responsibilities to the community, I think it's fair to say that now that this council knows as of this evening that there are these sweeping changes underway at the MOE level, that this council simply cannot just ignore that, pretend that this isn't happening. The reality is, it is. It's a big issue for people in the environmental law and consulting areas. It is something that as a public entity charged with the responsibility of looking after the public interest, in my submission, this council can and should be dealing with this issue. Otherwise, it is highly likely that by the time ground has even broken, the standards may well have changed, and by the time this arena opens, the arena itself, the risk assessments will be long obsolete under the new standards. And I don't think that that's something that this council can take lightly. So on that basis, it is our submission this evening that, given this knowledge, and again, we weren't in control of the fact that the MOE decided to bring this out on March the 28th of this year, nobody was in control of that, not SciTech, not this council, not our office. We're all just dealing with the reality of it. But knowing that that is the reality and that all of these substances, based on the knowledge that everyone in this room is fixed with today would be triggered, we would then be in a situation where we'd be simply asking council to do this. At this time, at this moment, until you approve what you're being asked to approve in the next few minutes, SciTech still holds the responsibility for this site and for assessing this site. So the simple question is, can council ignore the fact that all these new triggers are going to be set off under the new legislation? We say no. And the appropriate way to deal with that is to ask SciTech to deal with it. Because put simply, this is just a continuation of the process you've already been involved in. What that does is it means that taxpayers of this municipality don't have to pay the cost of doing the risk assessment to see where those numbers would end up on those other substances, and I think that's critical, I would hope, to every member of this council. In addition, I think it's critical to note that you don't, with great respect, want to be moving forward on a site where you're taking this full environmental responsibility and giving SciTech its complete releases without knowing everything that you reasonably can inquire about, about the site. And right now, we know nothing about lead and selenium and thallium and atrazine and benzoyl atrazine and indopyrene and pyrene and benzene. This is not an area that in my submission, council could afford to move into without some more knowledge and information. So at this point, your worship, those were my comments to council, and I'm certainly happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gillespie. Is there any questions of, at this point, Mr. Gillespie? Yes, Counselor Inoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have said time and time and time again, last council to this council, we do not want to put an arena on a land that's going to make residents sick. I mean, we're all in agreement to that. So I guess my first question would be, does our staff have this new document that Mr. Gillespie is talking about, and/or have our consultants and both of our consultants had a chance to go through that?
Good question.
We have a risk assessment person in this city, and I think our due diligence now that it's put before us is to make sure if our staff has it, that we have it before we move forward.
Thank you. I'm going to call Mr. Schramm, maybe if he could answer that question, please.
The answer is yes. We had that information in March, as did the MOE. Certainly the MOE was in control of this information, because they did release it on March 28th, and approved the risk assessment based on their knowledge that this information was going to be proposed and had already been proposed 14 days earlier, and approved the risk assessment. So this is proposed, it's out for public comment. If it is approved as you see it up here, it will not trigger another risk assessment for this property. The risk assessment has been done. The risk assessment has been approved by the ministry. They've issued conditions of approval under the certificate of property use, as we've described at our session on April 11th of this year. And the risk assessment looked at all these parameters. I think in some written submissions we made in response to questions, we did, the SciTech consultant went all through that, and Mr. Ferguson's here tonight, and he can, excuse me, talk in more detail to that. But one of the specific questions was thallium wasn't looked at, and Mr. Ferguson at the April 11th session addressed that specifically. So it will not trigger a risk assessment if these are approved tomorrow or in two years. The risk assessment's done, the risk assessment's approved. And we have this information, we're aware of this information, and the risk assessment is based on standards that were developed as part of that site, and that's why it's called a site-specific risk assessment. And Mr. Ferguson will explain on April 11th, and provide further information tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, could you come forward, please, and just elaborate if you would? Dr. Ferguson? Correct?
Your worship? Just to clarify on the updated MOE 2007, these various levels are screening values that you first initially go through. They're generic, they take into account a wide variety of things, and are tended to be very conservative and protective. The next step you do is you do a site-specific risk assessment, and you take into account specific conditions at that site to evaluate the overall risk. One thing to note, that the changes between the MOE 1997 and the 2007, you know a dramatic change in some of those. 90% of those changes, most of those changes are related to the inclusion of additional phytotoxicity parameters. They're not based on human health. They're based on being protective of plant species on the site. So what they're doing is trying to protect sensitive grains, sensitive plants, and what have you. What we've talked about on this site is we already have a risk management plan put in place on this site. Any ornamental plants or grasses we put on this site, we've already indicated in our risk management plan, we will be taking the soil out from that, putting clean soil in there, and replacing it. So none of these issues will impact on the plants. None of them are related to human health issues. We evaluated human health directly for this entire site. So any of the changes at the ministry, the ministry was well aware of, they've been working on these changes for over two years on the numbers, so they were well aware of it when they approved our risk assessment.
Doctor, any of these exceedances are going to be causing a future concern that the city of Niagara Falls may have with regard to the site?
No. We evaluated the risks under, as I presented to the council previously, under very stringent conditions, under very conservative conditions, assuming an individual was present at the highest level of the concentration for an extended period of time, for their whole lifetime. We assumed the maximum concentrations, when obviously they'll be moving around the site. We evaluated it very stringently, including even children, and we didn't have to do that for specialized conditions.
Could you give the council the benefit of knowing the status of the record of site condition at this point?
It has been submitted, and it is currently sort of in the administrative limbo right now. From what I understand, it's about to be, we're about to get confirmation of its approval.
And when would that be coming forward?
I believe it was supposed to be today or tomorrow, so I think it's just we're waiting, we were hoping to receive it by council today.
Okay. Are any other members of council have questions of Dr. Ferguson? Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Not a question, your worship. I mean, I just want to say that I think that we've been around this debate a few times. I mean, we've heard from our project manager, Mr. Dave Schramm, we've heard from Dr. Ferguson, we've heard from Mr. Pacioni, and the entire, I guess, brownfield remediation team, your worship. I think the message that comes loud and clear every single time we hear from them is that the site is safe. So I don't want to talk in circles anymore, I kind of want to get on with it. I'll make a motion, your worship, that we approve the recommendation if any were forced.
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo on approval. Is there a second, Counselor Mays? Any discussion on the motion? Having Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I just want to give some further assurance, maybe through you to either solicitor or one of the consultants. Conditions in favor of the city. We've heard Mr. Gillespie's comments, but there's two conditions, that the city is satisfied that all due diligence with respect to the preferred site have been performed and completed, and the one that is really important in my mind, that as record of site conditions permitting, the intended use in preferred site as an arena shall have been filed in the environmental site registry and acknowledged by the director of the Ministry of Environment. And that kind of gives us the satisfaction that the Ministry of Environment is not only involved, but the minister has to sign the document itself indicating that the site is safe. So I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you. Counselor Wing and Counselor DiDatti.
Yeah, I've been of two minds on this one, and I even now, I am. I'm really glad that United Here took up this cause, because I know there was a lot of people in this community, especially older members, who were really uncomfortable with our choice of the site. I think all the information that we had come forward over the past several months has been really helpful in raising the comfort level with this site. I know it certainly raised my own. You know, the one thing I'm really concerned about, when I read my agenda package on the weekend, I flagged the same things Mr. Gillespie flagged, the donor shall have no liability or obligation with respect to these lands, whether or not it's within the knowledge or imputed knowledge of the donor, et cetera. And the city fully releases the SciTech parties from any and all liabilities arising from or in any way related to the arena lands. And I know that what we've heard, you know, till now, shows that, at the time being, we should be comfortable with these lands and with our acceptance of them, but I'm just worried about the future. I just don't want to someday be thinking, gee, I shouldn't have supported that. And I think just perhaps in solidarity with the members of the community, who I understand are still out there, who have a lot of concerns with this site, I will vote against this. I'm not totally comfortable, and I think not being totally comfortable, I just can't support it.
Counselor, I hopefully can give you more comfort. I'd like to call on Dr. Ferguson again to maybe address your concern. Dr. Ferguson, we have a concern by Counselor Wing with respect to the future as well, and hopefully we're able to ask the question that she has.
Right. The scenarios we evaluated go well into the future as well, to evaluate any potential risks. What we're talking about primarily on this site are metals and other issues. Obviously, they won't change over time, they won't increase in concentration and what have you. So we're evaluating current day potential exposures and as well as site use going into the future. So all assessment parameters have been assessed. If anything, parameters tend to degrade over time.
And Dr. Ferguson, I should just say that our- And Dr. Ferguson, I should just say that our clerk just advised, and maybe we can call on Mr. Todd Davidson, it may be more of a legal problem, legal issue, so I'd like to call on Mr. Davidson to address that for us as well, for the benefit of Ms. Wing, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The release completes the circle for SciTech in terms of the donation and conveyance of the land. It's important to note that it's operative only as against the city. SciTech's position has been clear from the beginning, in that it was pleased to make the donation of the land on the condition that it did not expose itself to greater liability after having given the land over than it would have if it retained the land for its own use and kept it in its current form, vacant land fenced off and monitored the situation there. So again, the release is operative only as against the city. It doesn't insulate SciTech from M.O.E. orders or from third-party claims, for example. The two conditions that were spoken about in favor of the city on closing, if you approve signing the agreement that's before you tonight, that doesn't mean the city has to take the land, only that now you move forward to the next step, which is into the conditional phase of the city being totally satisfied with all of the due diligence, legal and otherwise, and that a record of site condition approving the use as an arena be acknowledged by the Director of the M.O.E. And from a liability standpoint, that record of site condition insulates the city from any M.O.E. cleanup orders in respect of contaminants that were discharged prior to the certification date. That is your assurance from a statutory perspective. Over and above the statutory threshold that will have been satisfied, all of the science has been peer-reviewed by your own environmental consultants and has found to be satisfactory. So you've gone above and beyond the provincial standard today.
And Mr. Davidson, we have retained you as counsel. Would you be glad to give the opportunity to counsel to advise us with respect to whether or not we should sign this agreement or accept this agreement with the provisions that are contained therein now?
Well, from a legal perspective, I see no reason not to sign this agreement. I think that it's a positive agreement for the city. From a legal perspective, there's no reason to not sign the document.
Thank you. Now, we may have other questions. I have Counsel DiDatti and Counsel Maves.
Thank you, your worship. My questions are for Mr. Ferguson, or Dr. Ferguson. I just, so I understand clearly, and I believe I do, but just to kind of reiterate, what you're saying is, we've always been testing, through your worship, we've always been testing for all of these things listed, and although now the M.O.E. is looking to possibly change what they expect to see on site, in terms of human exposure, it's not a risk, you're saying it's a risk to plants?
Right. Primarily, the ministry has updated it for ecological risks. So primarily to plants, most of those ones you saw on the chart were related to plants, also some ecological sensitive species of animals and what have you, that would not likely to be on a paved lot currently. So we evaluated all of those types of things as part of our assessment. Obviously, we have limited room for ecosystem opponents on this because of the nature of the particular property. But primarily, the changes that you saw to the metals, thallium, selenium, things like that, is related to sensitive plant species. The ministry has been evolving, largely, most of their parameters have been protective of human health, because that's what everybody's mostly concerned about. Gradually, that has been changing, and ecological health and species and plants have been given much more credence and almost equal weighting by the Ministry of Environment. So they've had to play catch-up on there, some of their guidelines. When they develop the guidelines, they're based on the most sensitive, whether it's human health or ecological. So now what you're seeing is some of the ecological receptors are much more sensitive to humans because they're closer in contact, and if they're plants, well, they're taking up a lot of the parameters in the soil. So as a result, they become more sensitive. So you see them driving the particular guidelines rather than human health, which was the previous values. So that's why they've come down quite a bit.
And one last question, sir, your worship. The thing you said, I believe you said, the values degrade over time?
Some of the parameters, for example, some of the sandy volatiles, or they mentioned petroleum hydrocarbons, for example, there's microorganisms in the soil that will break these down over time, so they gradually degrade. Particularly groundwater will degrade. Now that there's no source there for it to do, it's just the inherent what was present in the soil as it was. So they will go down. Metals will not, they'll generally stay there unless there's some kind of withdrawal process put in place. But the rest of those will gradually go down, due to natural process.
And metals, we had already, that was part of the original M.O.E.
That's right. All of these were evaluated as part of the full risk assessment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Counsel Maves?
Uh, we, your worship, I'd kind of like to ask Mr. Beeman a question, too.
Sure.
In releasing, the city released a SciTech, and so we do sign off the SciTech. Down the road, and I think we're all afraid that some of them are going to get sick, okay, my children, my grandchildren are going to get sick. Now, should that happen, should there be an epidemic that is caused by that, I can assure you, which I mean, Mr. Beeman, you can correct me, my mom, the lawsuit would include SciTech, would include the city, would include the M.O.E., would include the donor, would include Mr. Schram, who would get further involved in it, wouldn't it? Isn't that correct, Mr. Beeman?
Yes, Counsel, any counsel would itself would name anyone they possibly could think of to associate with the lawsuit. The M.O.E. has statutory immunity, so there wouldn't be much value in adding them, but all of the parties you mentioned would definitely be named in any lawsuit that would be brought as a result of assuming anybody can actually prove causation, which I think would be a heck of a challenge. But yes, if there was such a lawsuit, they would name all those parties.
Okay, so by us signing this, we're not totally letting SciTech off the hook, the public isn't letting SciTech off. Anyone who gets injured down the road isn't going to let them off.
That is right, correct. All we, what we are saying is that we will not claim over against SciTech.
Okay, so all these gentlemen who are saying that it's safe and everything else, they'd be included, and so I don't see any big danger in this thing, if everybody's going to be included. And these people are sticking their neck out, saying that it's safe.
Yes, although we should be careful, in the case of Dr. Ferguson, the regulations insulate him from liability. I think that should be clear to everyone.
Okay, but everybody else?
Yes, everybody else, yes.
As part of the show, should there be a lawsuit?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? We have a motion on the four members of council. No other questions, it's time to ask them now. Okay, we'll call the vote, all those in favor of the motion. One, two, three, four, five, correct. And we have an abstention by Counsel Cario Conflict and opposed, one, second, correct? No, let me just get that, one, can I have those votes again, please? One, two, three, four, five, six, sorry, that's better. And abstention by Counsel Cario and opposition by Counsel Wing. The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you again. Now, members of council, on the mayor's report, I'd like to offer our condolences to Mr. Ken Beeman, who is our acting city solicitor on the passing, recent passing of his father. Our condolences, Mr. Beeman. Also, to the family of Chief Don Harris, who passed away last week. Don was the former chief of Niagara Regional Police. The heartfelt thoughts of members of council are with you and your families as you mourn the loss of your loved ones. Moving on to other city business, I'd like to mention some of the significant events in our city in the past couple of weeks. Recently, the opening of the Krieghoff Gallery and Cafe at 5470 Victoria Avenue took place on Wednesday, June 13th, and I was pleased to visit the gallery for the grand opening on that day. And I want to offer thanks on behalf of members of council for the stunning framed print that the Krieghoff Gallery donated to the city hall. You'll see it here just in front of my desk, and I'd like to thank Mr. Peter Meyer of the Krieghoff Gallery for his generosity. And we certainly wish them much success on the opening of your Gallery and Cafe. And for the benefit of the camera, our clerk is holding up this print, and we hope to display this in appropriate spot here at city hall. Also, the Niagara Falls, if I may just say, the Niagara Falls Historical or Horticultural Society held their 54-fourth annual rose show at the La Marche Room of the Niagara Falls Public Library on Thursday, June 14th. It was a pleasure to meet the entrance of the show and to view the offerings of roses for the competition. On Wednesday, June 20th, we had a visit from the Honorable Madam Toye Zhu, the Consul General of the People's Republic of China. She is posted in Toronto, and she had just been posted in the last three or four months, and it was her visit to Niagara Falls last week. I was pleased to join her at a reception hosted by the Niagara Parks Commission and to welcome her to our city. Also, as part of Seniors Month, Willoughby Manor recently hosted their seniors appreciation event called Senior Idol, held last Wednesday. And it was a pleasure to judge the city event and to see many of the talented seniors in our city take to the stage to sing and perform. The regional events, I should say, well, the regional winner of this event, I should say, of Senior Idol will take part in the Chartwell National Senior Idol Competition to be held in Toronto. And I'd like to bring to the attention of members of council some of the upcoming events that you should be aware of. Obviously, this weekend, the Canada Day celebrations on July 1st. Our committee, of course, is hosting celebrations again this year at Optimus Park. The events will kick off with the parade at 11:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 1st. Entertainment will include live performances by local bands, including the Caverners and the Mad Hatters. As well, there will be lumberjack, wild west, BMX, and wrestling shows, along with the crowning of Miss Teen Niagara. There'll be lots to do for younger audience as well, with a carnival and a polka dot door performance, and I hope to see many of you on Sunday celebrating the Canada Day celebration in Niagara Falls. And we have a poster of all the activities that the staff has prepared, so we hope to have a great day, and it's always a good turnout, so we'll look forward to that. Also, we'll have the opportunity to host the mayor of Treasure Island, Florida, which is adjacent to St. Petersburg, Florida. And I'm pleased to mention that Mary Malouf of Treasure Island, Florida, will be on the at Canada Day, and she'll attend in the parade. She and, along with West Lane High School, have had a long partnership with Treasure Island, and more recently, West Lane and A and Meyer Bands have visited to perform at Bus Gardens and the Community Center right in Treasure Island. This year, Mary has agreed to visit Niagara Falls to see their performances in Canada. I look forward to having Mary Malouf in our city and attend the parade, and I hope that she will join me in offering her a warm welcome when she is here visiting. Also, Niagara Falls Garden Walk on Saturday, July 14th. This event is put on by the Niagara Falls Culture or Horticulture Society, and it is the 13th Annual Garden Walk. This year's garden tour focuses on some of the older parts of the city, including Stanford Green, Stanford, and the downtown area. Tickets can be purchased at Rainbow Greenhouses and Mullen Garden Market in Niagara Falls. And before I conclude, I'd like to also note the passing of Mr. Ed Mulligan, a long-established citizen here in Niagara Falls, and extend our condolences to his family as well. Thank you very much, members of council. Moving on to communications and comments of the city clerk, we have a request for permission to fly a CF-18 Canadian fighter aircraft for the Niagara Falls 2007 Canada Day celebrations over our city. You have a report moved by Counsel DiDatti and seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Are there any questions with respect to this? Having seen none, all those in favor, the motion is carried, thank you. Okay, the move two, three, four, the second, sorry, okay, we have a mover by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Thompson. First of all, to include the Victoria Center BIA request to approve their 2007 budget, the Fall View BIA request, the approval of their 2007 budget, and the Lundys Lane BIA request to approve their 2007 budget. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for our council's consideration this evening?
No, sir.
Okay. We have, on the clerk's matters, members of council, the first item is the granting of an official coat of arms, and we've got the information here for you. I'd like to ask you as well, in your consideration this evening, that we would ask, ask for a motion to invite the Governor General of Canada to come to Niagara to officially proclaim this. We'd have to extend an invitation to her, I'd like your concurrence to do so. Obviously, her schedule is very busy, but we'd like to see if she would be able to attend. She hasn't been in the area yet that I know of, so moved by Counsel Ryanone and seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo to include this as well in the motion. Are you making a motion to approve the recommendation as well? Okay, we'll include that, so all those in favor? Motion is carried, you know, thank you very much. Yes, Counsel DiDatti?
Also, I believe we owe a great deal of thanks to Mr. Ted. He spent a lot of time and personal money, and he raised all the funds that this could be possible.
Thank you for pointing that out, and also, we should direct a letter of thanks to Mr. Ted, and we'll do that on behalf of council. Fine, okay, we'll extend that as well. Thank you. And we have ratification of Community Services Committee action, and I have Counsel Ryanone as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of Community Services. The minutes of May 14th meeting be approved, that the revised police request to close Center Street, the July 1st weekend report be received for the information of committee, that the amendments to the Bylaw 89200 be approved, that the city proceed immediately with preparation of an education awareness program, draft sweeping tile disconnect bylot and field investigation for the targeted areas of the municipality, that the municipal boulevard maintenance policy hydro on corridors be received for the information of the committee, that the speed limit on bigger road between Montrons Road and the city's western boundary be maintained at 80 kilometers an hour, that the city enter into a four-year agreement with Niagara College Student Association Committee to provide bus service to the well and campus, that the hiring of a full-time supervisor of traffic and parking field services position be approved, that committee approve the expansion of the Lundys Lane Cemetery and the development of a pedestrian gateway with enhanced beautification, that staff coordinate with the proper authorities to update the population statistics on the welcome to the city of Niagara Falls signs, and that staff provide an information report on the reinstallation of a pathway along Portage Road to Chippewa by Marineland, and I so move.
Okay, moved by Counsel Ryanone, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Any discussion to those, that motion? Having seen none, all those in favor, the motion is carried. Thank you. Ratification of in-camera actions, Mr. Clerk?
The recommendation from a reporter in camera, that council approve the agreement of purchase and sale for 6156 Lundys Lane, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement of purchase and sale.
Thank you. Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel DiDatti. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, the motion is carried, thank you. The consent agenda, is there anything that the members of council wish to remove or consider separately from the consent agenda? Moved the agenda by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Maves. Any discussion or comments, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments for the bylaws listed for council's consideration this evening?
No, sir.
Okay, can I have a motion then to introduce the bylaws? The bylaws be given a first reading?
I have a bylaw that I'd like to move. Bylaw 2007-133, a bylaw to amend, a bylaw 112, in a bylaw to set the levy of rates for taxation. I'm against all increases.
Thank you, so noted. Counsel Thompson?
Move the bylaws.
Okay, Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel DiDatti. You heard the motion, sorry, are you making comments? Yes, Counsel Ryanone?
Thank you. I'm voting opposed to 2007-128 bylaw to permit the closing part of Grassy Brook and Coral Roads, and I voted against bylaw to amend, permit the existing one family detached to all interviews as a cottage rental. I'm sorry, and that was 200130.
130, thank you, so noted. Counsel Wing?
Yes, I'm opposed to the same two bylaws. I opposed both those matters when they were before.
Which ones were they again?
128 and 130.
Okay, the same ones?
Yes, Grassy Brook closing and the new cottage rental on Lundys Lane.
Okay, thank you. Are there any others? We'll call the vote, council through the motion. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Bylaws 2007-127 to 2007-134, a first reading.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Cario. You've heard the motion, any comments or questions? Have we seen, yes, Counsel Wing?
Actually, I just realized there's another one in there. I'm just going to go through it thoroughly. 132, the agreement with SciTech, I'm opposed to that as well.
132, so noted. Okay, all those in favor? The motion is carried, thank you very much.
Bylaws 2007-127 to 2007-134, a second and third, so it's happened.
Thank you very much. New business, Counsel Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I'm glad that Mr. Grant is here tonight. Obviously, there's a lot of people on council who must have had comments and concerns expressed to them about Woodbine Avenue and the changes that have taken place there. I'm unaware, and there must have been complaints about speeding or people driving through there too quickly, but we have, and if you've been out there to have a look at that, there are numerous speed bumps, and all of the intersections have been narrowed, particularly with the one business that exists there who is having difficulty and called a complaint about the situation. I'm just wondering, what process did that go through there? Complete public process? Everybody had the opportunity to participate, and, uh, have you received the same kind of, uh, expression of, of concern and, uh, shock by people who should have known what was going on?
Mr. Grant?
Mr. Mayor, uh, that went through the EA process, so it was a public process, involved a number of public meetings, and people were, uh, involved in, in, uh, making recommendations to, uh, put in those devices. Um, and as far as, uh, concerns, um, my office hasn't filled in any yet.
Okay, uh, I've had numerous, and, uh, I don't know, uh, I had to go and have a look at it because I was unfamiliar with it. What was the total cost of that, uh, construction? You have any idea?
Um, approximately 150,000.
Okay. All right, um, I, uh, I have brought it up, as I said I would, uh, and, uh, I appreciate your comments, but if it's gone through the EA process, then, uh, everybody had the opportunity to, uh, make their comments. Um, I have two other, uh, items. The first one is, uh, with respect to, uh, the, uh, provincial project, uh, with respect to water testing and lead. Uh, there are numerous people who, uh, live in homes with, uh, older, uh, lead pipes, and also a lot of people who have, um, rental accommodation that, uh, maybe have some concern with respect to liability with, uh, the, uh, lead, uh, and I know that, uh, this was only done in, uh, a few municipalities, uh, across the province. In fact, I, I saw where there was going to be some voluntary testing in the city with respect to that, and I'm wondering, uh, when we can have and how quickly we can have a report back with respect to, uh, what, uh, a landlord would do with, uh, owning a, an older home, and, uh, and, uh, what liability would they have, and what remedial action could be taken with respect to that? And I think that now that this has been highlighted, uh, and, uh, I, I had the rather smile, my background is in testing water and, uh, and dealing with, uh, water sampling and, uh, flushing the water for five minutes, uh, I'm sure not too many people are going to do that before they, uh, have a drink of water, and of course, this is particularly of concern to, uh, young children and, uh, certainly, uh, pregnant mothers, uh, to their unborn child. Uh, so are we expecting, uh, to be waiting for the province to, uh, get back, uh, with a public statement, uh, provincial-wide, or, uh, now that this has been raised, this is, uh, a real concern with respect to, uh, people who, uh, have rental accommodation and people who live in older homes?
Good question, uh, Councilor. I'm going to ask, there's two parts to that, one is legal and one is the practical side. I'm going to ask Mr. Holman, uh, to respond. I know that Mr. Gullwick's not available this evening, so, Mr. Holman, could you respond to that, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, we're just completing the inventory, uh, process, and as we come across them, we are notifying both the landlord and the owner and, uh, and the tenants, uh, to make sure that they understand, uh, what risks, uh, might be available to them, uh, but we'd like to come back to the comprehensive report, uh, hopefully in July, if we can get all the numbers together.
Okay, and possibly, Mr. Beeman, uh, it might be a legal question that Councilor Thompson has asked, uh, can you address that matter with regard to liability?
Well, if the landlord was aware that there were elevated, uh, lead levels in the water he was supplying, uh, he would, uh, be exposing himself to liability to his tenants for any damages he causes to them. Um, and he could, uh, insulate himself on that by, uh, taking measures to filter the lead out of the water.
Yeah, well, through the chair, I, I doubt very much whether, uh, up until, uh, the provincial testing, that, uh, anybody who had rental accommodation was aware that they would, uh, have any, uh, lead, or whether they even inspected their property to determine, and if they could see where there were lead, uh, lead there, and, uh, this is something that has just been, uh, dumped on everybody all at the same time, and, uh, what, uh, what remedial action is, uh, is being taken by the municipality, and I'll wait for your, uh, report, but, uh, is there an opportunity to request, uh, sampling, uh, at a site if somebody is so interested to, uh, take that, uh, proactive, uh, action?
Thank you, Mr. Beeman, and Mr. Holman once again, please.
Um, yes, certainly, if people have information regarding their own water surfaces, we'd be happy to come out and, uh, and take some samples at those locations.
That's, uh, that's what I wanted to hear, and I appreciate that. Uh, the final item is, uh, is one that, uh, I am no stranger to, I've been, uh, talking about this since the initial report, uh, came out with respect to the, uh, Mid Peninsula Corridor or the GTA, uh, and my comments have been, uh, consistent throughout that, and in fact, the only reason that I, I haven't, uh, been involved or raised it, uh, other than the fact that I haven't been here, uh, is the fact that, uh, there was finally a decision made by the provincial government, and I commend the provincial government for finally saying that they're going to do a complete environmental assessment with respect to the, uh, Mid Peninsula Corridor. I believe that, uh, the, uh, the interest has been piqued in the last little while by a consultant's report which came out, which, uh, was a glowing report of, uh, how, uh, how wonderful this would be and how many jobs it would create and, uh, what a, an asset it would be, uh, uh, as far as the economy, and, uh, there are many people who question, uh, the, uh, author of that particular report, myself included, uh, that, uh, there's no magic, uh, uh, ball that's going to, uh, you can gaze into to, uh, determine what benefits are going to come as a result of this, uh, and in fact, uh, when the initial report came out, there were all kinds of people, and it was supposed to take, uh, all kinds of business and, uh, uh, development and industrial opportunities, uh, along the corridor, when in fact, the report itself said that there would be no, uh, large-scale development along the Mid Peninsula Corridor because there were no services there. Uh, the, uh, they also want to take all of the, um, the traffic and drop it over on the, uh, the Fort Erie border at the bridge, when, uh, we all know that, uh, there is no action with respect to the, uh, Fort Erie Bridge, and, uh, the major, uh, situation that I'm concerned about, everybody talks about agriculture and preserving agricultural lands. Eighty-five percent of the lands on the west side of the Queen E are farmed, and yet, here we are suggesting that a, uh, a major artery of asphalt or concrete, uh, is, uh, suitable to break up all of these farm properties and, uh, and cause that kind of problem. And we heard tonight the sensitivity with respect to, uh, the environment. I don't think anybody has given, uh, hopefully this report from the province is going to, uh, look at the environment. With all of the sensitive, uh, wetland areas, with all of the tree stands, uh, there has been no thought given to, uh, the impact that that is going to have. Uh, there are other areas and other ways of, uh, of dealing with this, uh, traffic problem. Uh, there was the minister who was in and made comments a little while ago, indicating that, uh, the, uh, traffic problems and the, uh, concerns of the future are not going to be resolved by, uh, major highways. They are going to be done by looking at other means of, uh, transportation, bus, rail, and, uh, even, uh, water and air, rather than, uh, uh, looking at a, a major highway, which is three to five billion dollars and could be, uh, certainly, we won't have to, I won't have to worry about it, uh, ten, ten years down, down the road. So, I really, uh, want to reiterate, and I know that, uh, Councilor Diodati brought it up, uh, a year or two ago, and, uh, basically, uh, put a resolution that, uh, was not in favor of the, uh, Mid Peninsula Corridor, then there was some revision sometime after that, which, uh, basically said they were interested in looking at, uh, making sure that the total environmental assessment was, uh, carried through, and that satisfied me at this particular time. But I was, uh, very concerned with this consultant's report, which in my opinion didn't have any validity, and I want to, uh, also refer to the, uh, report editorial that was in the Niagara Falls Review. Um, I have never seen, uh, such a, a straightforward, logical, and, uh, uh, certainly an editorial that I agree with, that, uh, that was set out. Uh, it's ba- it's a baffling proposal, wrong on just about every level, and built upon faulty and manufactured logic. Uh, wow, I wish I had have said that. But anyway, uh, if you look at the traffic counts coming from, uh, Hamilton, Burlington, uh, to Niagara Falls, they're substantial. If you look at the traffic counts, uh, from Niagara Falls to Fort Erie, they diminish to be almost insignificant. So, I, I'm delighted that, uh, uh, the provincial government is sticking with its guns with respect to a full environmental assessment. That's what has to be done with respect to, uh, this development, and I, I, I wish the, uh, the regional government would stop spending money on insignificant reports that have no bearing on the situation, and let's get down and see what the environment has to say, and I'll be the first one, if it recommends, uh, uh, the corridor, uh, with all of the environmental safeguards, to say, "Okay, we went through the process, and I accept it," so.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson.
Thank you for that opportunity.
Just want to advise the members of council as well, that at a meeting we had with the minister back, uh, I think it was in March, in Downsview, uh, mayors were invited to meet with the minister, and she's been very open with us and very cordial and very receptive. Uh, she has assured me and assured that other members of, of actually regional council and mayors, that, uh, there will be extensive, extensive, uh, opportunity for members of council and staff and other organizations to make their comments known under the environmental assessment process, so please, uh, participate. Obviously, there's going to be comments that you'll have that'll be valued and to make, uh, on behalf of the residents, so I'd appreciate that. We'll have notice of meetings that will be, uh, held, but, uh, the process is just beginning, and, uh, we had a chance to meet with some of the bureaucrats who will be conducting the, the, the process, and, uh, they have assured us that, uh, there will be extensive consultation, so just to let you know that, uh, your comments will be invited. Yes, Councilor, uh, Diodati, and then Councilor Iannoni?
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, it's funny, in regard to, uh, Councilor Thompson's, uh, comments, I'm also curious, now that the, uh, Lincoln Alexander is, um, going to be extended down to the QEW through, uh, through Hamilton, I'm curious to see how that changes, uh, things in terms of traffic flow, uh, going west, you know, up the 403 toward the 401 into that manufacturing corridor. Um, that'll, yet to be seen. Anyway, I just have one, uh, comment on a new business, and it's in regard to our, our, um, council key access passes. And we've talked about this, uh, a few times, and I know we've sent things out, and I don't know what ever happens to that. Anyway, um, uh, the problem with our passes, they seem, uh, they're very limited, uh, access and seemingly kind of random. Uh, we're never quite sure what corridor, actually, it was kind of funny, as we're coming up today, we weren't sure if we could get in the one hallway if it worked or if it didn't work. Um, it seems to me that since personal and confidential material and information can be locked up in a, in an office, and as well, the fact that every time we swipe our card, there's a security record, an instant security record of, um, of us trying to go into or going into, uh, a particular doorway, uh, or building or meeting room, um, that I would make the motion that, uh, we, I can't see any reason for us having limited access with these cards, uh, and for that reason, I would make the motion that we have immedi- that we immediately have, uh, full access on our cards to, uh, as well include the community center and the, uh, new arenas that will be built.
You have a motion on the floor by Councilor Diodati, seconded by Councilor Iannoni. Uh, any comments with regard to that? No comments? Make any comment, Councilor Peter Angelo?
Well, Your Worship, um, yeah, I mean, I personally don't need, uh, access to every building that the, uh, that the municipality owns. I don't need access to every corridor either. I'm quite happy wa- uh, walking through the front door and only getting in through the door that I need. I think, uh, some staff members, Your Worship, I know John McDonald as well, would probably like to be here to comment on it. He's not here right now. Before we pass the motion, Your Worship, perhaps we can defer it for a couple weeks until he's back.
Request to defer?
Sure.
Is there a second or to the request to defer? Do you second it?
I have a question. Why? We're, we're the directors. We're making a motion. We don't have to ask John McDonald's permission to make a motion, as the matter said.
Okay.
And nor does he have to be informed. All of them, and Diodati, Councilor Diodati has brought this up, I think this is like the sixth time. If, if our staff doesn't trust us to have unlimited, uh, access, that's their problem. If they have a, a security and safety committee, I'd certainly like to sit on it, because that's my entire background, and considering every time we swipe our card, we're on record, and they can pull up wherever we've been, there's absolutely no problem. I'm surprised that he, that Councilor Peter Angelo would even make that. All, Councilor Diodati has been asking forever. Either you trust us or you don't. It's our decision, it's not Mr. McDonald's.
I respect your comment, I also respect Councilor Peter Angelo's comment, he made his point. Is there a second or to the motion to defer? Okay, the motion, uh, there's no second, so that is defeated. Now, we have a motion on the floor with respect to this access. Uh, we're ready to call the vote unless there are any other questions. Having seen none, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed? Come on, thank you, the motion is carried, thank you very much. Uh, I have, uh, Councilor Iannoni next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if you could update council on the, uh, on where it stands with regards to looking to allocate 22 Division and merge it with headquarters of the Niagara Regional Police. I'd hate to see us wake up one morning and, and read in the front page of the newspaper that the decision's been made. Um, I, you know, I get, I talk to a lot of people in that field a lot of the time, and I want to make sure is that this council has an ability to fight that decision, because when we, since we raised it in the last council, uh, the last time I raised it in this council chamber, I've heard from a lot of the residents, and I, I, and I don't need the whole analogy on their cars, is there mini office, and the, I mean, perception is everything. Um, there's a lot of people, you've even spoke about services that are being removed from this city. The residents don't want to see 22 Division moved out of Niagara Falls, and I wonder if you can tell us where that sits.
Yes, uh, my most recent discussion with the chief was, uh, last week, and, uh, there has been no decision made, uh, the report is not complete yet, um, and she assures me that, uh, she will be here, uh, before any decision is made, and, uh, I've talked to, as you know, members of the Police Services Board, uh, we have Councilor Smeaton who represents Niagara Falls, uh, at the region, who sits on that board as well, uh, in addition to three others, uh, or two others, I should say. Uh, we are looking, uh, obviously, we'll be looking to, uh, when the report is, is submitted, to, obviously, have some input, so at this point, uh, the decision has not been made, and the report is not complete to the best of my knowledge. Councilor Iannoni?
When you say the decision is not made, does-
Made by Police Services.
By the Police Services Board. Well, we have a chance to have input into that, into the Police Services Board when they, um, decide to make that decision, because I have no problem showing up at that meeting and speaking if there, if it's possible, and I know many of us would.
In fact, uh, Councilor, I've invited the chief, uh, before that happens to come, and to make a presentation, uh, to us, uh, with regard to, uh, the policing matter, so, Councilor, we've invited the chief, and hopefully she will, uh, come, uh, sometime possibly in July or August to, to address this matter.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I think I'd like to put us on record. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we're on record as opposing our, our 22 Division, our local police department be closed. Um, Dan Stadway's counsel did that. I think it's a smart, proactive move on our part.
Yeah, the only unfortunate part is, Councilor, and I'd certainly be glad to entertain the motion, is we don't have the, uh, information and what, uh, what is even contemplated, so-
Mr. Mayor, it doesn't matter. I, I'm, I'm pretty certain that I'm going to fight to keep that police department in this city.
You can make a motion, okay. We've got a motion, and, uh, seconded by Councilor Ring. Any comments, uh, Councilor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. Um, I didn't want to take the rest of council's time again tonight with, uh, long speeches, but I also had, uh, this, uh, as a, an item, St. Catherine's, the mayor wants to keep police headquarters in St. Catherine's, and a submission by the mayor in St. Catherine's, uh, and if you're, if, if you didn't see St. Catherine's on top of the headline here, you'd, uh, you'd think it was Niagara Falls, indicating that, uh, this is vital to the downtown and any revitalization, and, uh, if you compare the city of Niagara Falls with St. Catherine's, uh, with, uh, 12 million visitors, with the traffic problems we have, as a border community, with the, uh, the international problems with drugs and grow ops and all the other problems, uh, there is a powerful case to be made for, uh, not taking away from St. Catherine's, which the mayor of St. Catherine's also said he wasn't trying to affect us, but, uh, if we don't, uh, make our views known, and, uh, I would suggest that the staff prepare a suitable submission and, uh, ask you to, uh, make a presentation to the police commission, so that we have had the equal opportunity to make our views known with respect to, uh, our feelings, because if you put that, uh, police department out of the downtown, uh, that's going to have a huge impact on whatever revitalization that we're going to, uh, get in the future, so, um, I think the, uh, squeaky wheel gets the grease, and, uh, if, uh, if they're doing it, I think we have to put our submission with facts and statistics with respect to, uh, uh, what, uh, what, uh, we have here in comparison, and as a matter of fact, I had a long conversation with, uh, one of the superintendents, uh, today, who, uh, indicated that some of the isolated areas get very few calls, and we are almost equal to, uh, St. Catherine's, but our calls are of a more serious nature, where they have, uh, calls, uh, with respect to, uh, domestic disputes, et cetera, because of the large population. We have more serious, uh, problems with drug-related and, uh, and other problems that we've run into as a border community, but, uh, I would support, uh, the co- comments of, uh, Councilor Iannoni wholeheartedly, and, uh, hopefully you would make, uh, a suitable submission with statistical information that backs up, uh, why we should be, uh, seriously thought of as, as keeping this in, uh, in downtown Niagara Falls.
Thank you, Councilor. If the council passes that motion, I'd be pleased to follow that direction, and, uh, If the council passes that motion, I'd be pleased to follow that direction, and as I said, one better is we have an invitation that I've extended to the chief to have her come to address council, and we didn't get specific, but I was told by her that we'd be talking about that certainly before a decision is made, hopefully, but Councilor Iannoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I welcome Chief Selfout to come. I mean, the only presentation Chief Selfout can come and say is, you're going to keep your Niagara Falls. If she's coming to give us her argument as to why the 22 Division needs to be moved or amalgamated with St. Catherine's, quite frankly, I think she's going to leave with the same vote you see happen tonight. What I'd like to do is amend my motion to say that we ask the mayor to put together staff, put together a presentation for the mayor, and have the mayor put on an agenda, i.e. for the region or the Police Services Board, to make a presentation given by direction of this council, so I'd like to amend my motion to that.
What would be the Police Services Board, Councilor?
Okay, thank you, then the mayor make a representation for this council of the police, the next available police service board he can get on the agenda in order to keep our police department.
Okay. We have a motion before us, the members of council, all those in favor? Carry unanimously, thank you very much. Any other new business? Having seen none, a motion adjourned. Councilor Maves, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo, all those in favor? Thank you very much, everybody.